I'm going to call a meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Donahue.
Here.
McKnight.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Sterns.
Here. If you would please send your pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you have a cell phone, iWatch, or iPad, or any kind of device like that, if you would just mute it to the meeting, I appreciate it. I'll try to remind you to turn it back on at the end of the night. Anyone has a public comment? Gary, if you want to give us an update on the disaster emergency updates.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're still operating under disaster emergency declaration until further action of council, so I think at this point, we're still recommending we stay under that, just in case. It allows some of the authorities to operate remotely, so we want to keep that in place for the foreseeable future. The latest change in occupancy is allowing, the governor's order allowing maximum occupancy to 25% for indoor events and up to 50% for outdoor. Of course, six foot physical distancing and mask wearing are still required. And that's pretty much all I have for the COVID right now.
Any questions for Gary? Hearing none. Notice of executive sessions, meetings, Katie?
Your Honor, an executive session was held on March 17th, 2021 to discuss litigation.
Good, thank you. Any motion to approve the minutes from March 17th, please?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Under communications, Katie, we received a letter from Reverend Gary Manning.
Yes, Your Honor. This letter is dated March 31st, 2021. Mr. Reverend Manning writes that this is his, another letter about a request he made three weeks ago regarding Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial. He reiterated the information in his second letter about where he thinks the monument could go, and he closed by saying, "I have support from Mr. Kenneth Overton, an elder who requested this to be done. I also have support from Pastor Marcus McDaniel from United Faith Fellowship Church of God, Pastor Larry Woolford of Beacon Liberty Church of God in Christ." And he included a picture of what he would like to be designed as a memorial, and he says if any council has any questions, they can contact him.
I'm just going to follow up with that letter. I spoke to Gary. The letter was actually supposed to go to the school district since we're looking at putting the monument down at Second District School. So that letter really should have went, but if we can just go ahead and forward that. I know they're already going to meet tomorrow afternoon, but if we can just continue that letter to Mr. Washington, I'd appreciate it. Any other questions on that? Managers report, Gary.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two presentations tonight. The first one, it's that time of year again when we talk about paving. So Nathan Zazula, the Director of Public Works, is here to talk about public, both the Capitol paving, the city Capitol paving, and the CDVG paving. So at this point, I'm going to turn that over to Nathan, and he'll go through that for council.
Good evening, Your Honor and Council. Yeah, since that time of the year, the past couple of years, I've come and done a quick synopsis of the proposed paving for this construction season. One thing to note, and I'm sure the public will appreciate, the amount of paving this year will be substantially less than last year. Last year, the city itself paved out of three different pots of money, CDVG, our capital program, and also a grant that we received. But in addition to that, you had PennDOT with three construction projects going on at the same, during the season as well. So to my knowledge, there are no PennDOT construction projects, and this year we'll only be paving out of two pots of money. So a little less activity, but we do have some things on the agenda. One note, what you'll see here in terms of that display in the spreadsheet, we, I'm referencing specifically costs for paving. Some of these projects encompass things like curb work and some stormwater and ADA, which are included in overall project cost, but what I'm highlighting is specifically paving-related costs tonight for this presentation. I think in the past years, council has asked, you know, how do we come up with our paving list? I know in the past, when we borrowed, there was a five-year, three-year paving plan, which they, we stuck to for the most part, but there are a lot of things that we consider when we're looking at what streets are going to be on the upcoming paving list. Couple of these are utility openings, so we don't always predict when National Field Gas and Water Authority is going to dig up the street. And so it can very quickly turn into a mess and a nightmare on a particular street when you have a number of utility openings. So we consider how many of those are on a particular street. In addition, our crews, when they're out cold patching, cold patch blue or not per ton costs more than warm mixed asphalt. So the more we're cold patching in an area, those are streets that we want to target for getting paved sooner than later. We also take into consideration citizen complaints and requests that come in throughout the year, whether it's potholes, general condition. Those come in usually to the Public Works Department directly. We take a look and try and determine whether or not they would be appropriate for the paving the upcoming year. And then we try and prioritize all these relative to the amount of traffic that a particular intersection or street sees. So there are a number of factors that we look at when we try and prioritize areas where we're going to pave. That being said, CDVG, the first list of streets that we need to discuss, this was, these were streets identified back in 2000, end of 2018, believe it or not, for the 2019 CDVG program. So it takes a little while for some of these streets, even though we had them on our radar, to finally make it to paving program. What you'll see this year, and the top five streets will get paved under one project, and that is already out to bid right now. So you'll see that sooner than the last street, which is East Street. East Street being the brick street. We identified a number of issues that we want to address during that project, and so that will be bid separately. We've actually gone to PCE engineers for some design work. It has a steep slope. The crown of the road is off a little bit right now due to some settlement of the brick. We want to get that crown back in the roads. We need some design drawings that we'll work with when we finally get that out to bid. We're doing some stormwater work there because, again, you want to make sure on that steep slope, you're getting your water into your catch basins and make sure those pipes are adequate. And there's at least one ADA ramp that will be doing as part of that overall project. So that will be late in the construction season. If all the design work's not set up, that possibly could get pushed to next year. So just have that, you know, if you don't see it, get done this year. We're working on getting it done. We want to make sure it's done and right. There's a lot more involved with it due to the fact that you're moving the base, got to build that street back up. We're replacing all the curb because right now it's curving better. So that's going to be a big project. The next, Gary, can you slide that up? Thanks. The next group of streets are being paved out of our capital improvement fund, and these were funds borrowed back in, ended 2017, 2018, and it was supposed to be a three-year capital improvement plan for paving. We're into 2021. We do have funds left to do the streets here as described. And then we're also looking at holding out a remainder of the borrowed funds from 2018 to pave at least three streets next year. And the reason why we can't do them this year is because two of them are related to, we are using them as a local match for grants we're applying for. And so we can't pave and then say later on, retroactively, hey, by the way, that's our local match. So that would be Bessemer Street, French Street, and then Clark Road, we're hoping to work with West Community Township to split the paving costs there. But that will be it for funds that were borrowed in 2018 through a capital borrowing for paving improvements. One of the reasons we've been able to stretch these dollars out is we've gone to other sources. So the use of CDVG funds has helped us stretch some of these capital paving dollars. So we target some areas that we could pave with the CDVG program. That's been effective. And also, you'll remember, we applied for a million dollars of grant funds through the local federal aid program. That helped substantially. We applied again this year, and we were successful in getting $300,000. So that helps stretch the funds that we borrowed out at least till next year. But I bring that up because that, those funds will likely be done and extended in their entirety next year. So this is the time for us to begin looking at a new three-year, five-year capital paving program, new as well. That's pretty much it in terms of work that's being done. You'll see Willow Street is on there. That's going to be a pretty big project. We do have some additional curb work. That street was actually on the list last year, but when the Water Authority went and did their project, we obviously waited a season, let things settle out. That way, when we go in and do our work, we know we're on a solid base. Liberty Street, I'm sure many of you draw it, the section between Clark Road and Linden, almost to Willow Street, is in pretty desperate need and sees a lot of traffic as well, so.
Do you have a lot of ramps that need done, a lot of those?
So there are. We actually started building the list last year because we limit how much we were spending because we're contracting that work out. So we put an end at the end of last year, late summer, to ADA ramps that we're going to do in last year. So we're on the list for this year, so we have probably over 20 ramps that have been identified as even prepared. We're going to try and do some of that work in-house. So a lot of the basic concrete work is done and set. A lot of it has to do with the truncated domes, the plastic pads that underneath the concrete has deteriorated. So we, as Public Works, are going to attempt to do quite a few of those on our own instead of contracting those out. We're hoping to do at least half of those, and so cut half of what we would have normally spent through the capital budget on ADA ramps that we would have contracted out.
I was wondering if anyone came up with a better way of doing it, because they seem to get, some of them get destroyed really fast, and if there was some way to, the ones that get destroyed from tucks going over on corners?
Yeah, it's difficult because in law cases, that's, the whole ramp has eliminated any curb, and now without increasing your radius, that's exactly what happens. You get a lot of vehicular traffic that tends to then cut the corner where they may have broken curb before, at least been deterred from driving over it. Now it's not as big of a deal. There's a couple different types of plastic truncated dome that we've experimented with. We feel like we have a little bit better success with one, so we're going to, we're going to replace them with those than the ones that were done for like a couple-year period. So yeah, there's no singular answer, though, for that.
Nathan, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Many people don't realize, but Chestnut Street from the Diamond up is a state highway.
That is correct.
Do you have any input or any idea when they're going to take and smooth that street out all the way to Alden?
I don't believe they're going to do any more, from what I understand, they're not going to do any more spray patching, which is what they did last year, this year. That, the next improvement project will be paving that, but as far as I understood, that's not till 2023. I'll be happy to touch base with the county maids' office and see if they have any additional plans for that.
I mean, that's, that's pretty rough, especially for a city street, or in the city of Mayville. It's like, hanging on to the road.
And it was worse last year when there was a lot of loose material on the road. We actually worked with, we're penned up to try and sweep a lot of that up, but where there were a lot of complaints and calls as well, just from the loose material.
You can just kind of keep your thumb on that?
Yep, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
I need a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
When you're counting linear feet, is each lane considered linear feet? Like Willow Street from Water to South Main is not 2,000 feet long unless you took 1,000 feet going one way and 1,000 feet going the other way, and that was worked out just about right?
Typically, for our estimates, our estimating, we use the city's matrix that goes off of linear feet, which is usually intersection to intersection, and then a width, and that's how we come up with the estimates. May I double check that number?
That's what I kind of thought. Now, the other question, there's a, I notice in the CDVG-funded projects, the average cost is higher per linear foot than the city's capital funded. Is that because there's heavier work to do?
There's two things. One is, again, with the street, that plays into it. And then on, two of the CDVG projects are tarship, and so there's no exist, so you're milling and regrading to some extent and doing some additional base work that may not have been included in one of the other, you know, another city street. All the city streets are, in this capital funded, are milling, straight milling and paid.
All right, thank you. You're doing a great job. You and your people are doing a great job. Thank you.
I was just quickly, Nathan, you mentioned that kind of depleting, I guess, these borrowed funds means that we need to start looking at a new three-to-five-year capital paving program plan. I wonder if you or maybe Gary could speak to like what that would look like, like what developing that typically looks like, how we go through that?
It's, it's not just for paving, too. It's in general, I mean, for police cars, for fire equipment, for public works equipment in general. You know, pretty much the borrowing, Nathan's done a good job, and the chiefs, the chiefs have also done a good job of stretching out those capital funds, but we really are, we're into the fourth or fifth year now, I think, of just stretching those funds that were intended to be spent over three years. So we really, we did plan to come to council this summer, late spring, to talk about capital borrowing, capital funding needs over the next three years, see how we want to fund that, what's needed, what levels we're looking at, so that will be coming to council.
So we'll expect that to start in a couple months?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, so the, the next one is, we're going to talk about 911, potential police dispatch shifting to 911. To kick off the discussion this time, we decided we'll start with what a police department, basically a police department analysis of what that might look like and what kind of impacts there might be on the police department operations, as well as potential savings that we may, may see with that. So with that, I'll turn it over to leave to Assistant Chief Stefanoucci and Chief Totten to give that presentation.
Your Honor, Council, thank you for having us. My name is Mike Stefanoucci. I'm your Assistant Chief of Police. Gentleman Basadi, who needs no introduction, Chief Michael Totten. You made me say that. We're here to give you a presentation on what we think police dispatch is and what it would look like in a transition to Crawford County 911. We were tasked by then same city manager, Andy Walker, to give this and to keep it as factual as possible, and we believe we've done so. So the first page we have here is just a couple definitions that everyone might not be familiar with. AP is used in the presentation as auxiliary police. Clean NCIC is defined database accessible to FBI, state, local law enforcement agencies nationwide. RMS is Record Management System. In our case, Muteville City Police Department, it's NSYNC. PFA stands for Protection from Abuse Order. Powercom, that's the company that we use at the police department to train our dispatchers and to certify them for us. Holding cell. It's a cell where an individual who has been arrested is being held until they can be safely released into the community. In our case, a time period of six hours. A holding cell is different than a cell at the Crawford County Correctional Facility. Those are meant for more of long-term stays, where ours are a six-hour stay. Mobile data terminal, in our case, it's just a laptop computer with wireless internet capabilities that can communicate with our RMS system back at the station in their additional use to reach other web-based systems that by the state police for law enforcement use.
Hey, Steph, can you mention, talk real quick about why it's six hours in a holding cell? What, what do you mean it's that?
So that's our determined time that we're comfortable holding someone for a public drunkenness or like offense to sober up and be safe to release to the community for their safety and for the community. That six hours is what we do try to hold to. It could be less, it could be slightly more if need be, but there would have to be special circumstances for doing longer than six hours. So the next slide is our current dispatch operations. We currently have three full-time dispatchers and one part-time dispatcher. Our dispatchers are trained and certified as law enforcement dispatchers by the company Powerphone. Our dispatchers receive continuing education and recertification every two years. The police chief is trained and conducts quality assurance for each dispatcher. That's the last time council heard about this discussion on dispatch. That was a subject that was brought up that at that point, we had in-house training, but we didn't have a training, certified training program. And so the last time this was brought up, that, that was one of the things that resulted from it, was a certified training program through a company. And like I said, that was resolved, and we continue with that since 2016. So the duties of a Muteville City Police Department dispatcher, they answer emergency calls for assistance and dispatch officers to the scene. They answer non-emergency calls, and if it's a police matter, they dispatch an officer to the caller's location. If it's not a police matter, they connect the caller with a resource to assist or help them. It's not always the police that someone needs. Sometimes they could need medical treatment, they could need health treatment. The police department is not necessarily always going to be the answer. They dispatch our auxiliary police via radio and telephone. They serve as auxiliary police point of contact during all incidents and functions. They take WAPP complaints at the dispatch window, call an officer into the station if need be, and provide information requested by the individual that may be visiting the city building seeking help. This is a continuation. They monitor our department's six holding cells via live feed camera system. They monitor the city building, Diamond Park, parking garage, Market Alley, all by live feed camera system. They dispatch officers to any suspicious activity they see at those locations. They enter data into our RMS system for each call. There's quite a bit of information that each call may generate, the caller's information, witness, victim, suspect, vehicle information. That's all data that they enter in to our RMS system, so when the officer comes back to do his report, that information is already there. It saves a great deal of time for the officer to complete his report. He doesn't have to go back and enter all of that data himself, so it keeps an officer on the street a little bit longer. They monitor and make entries into the Clean NCIC terminal. They take after-hour emergency calls for the water board. Our dispatchers are also responsible for a long list of administrative duties such as filing requests for accident reports, filing warrants, PFA orders, and many more clerical duties. So Crawford County Emergency Services, they answer emergency calls on the 911 line, and they will dispatch our officers to the scene. They also have a non-emergency line, and if they have a call for the Muteville City Police Department, they will dispatch officers to that caller's location and/or notify an officer that he needs to make a phone call to that person that's who the request was. They will not determine whether a call is a police issue or not, or if it's a civil issue in nature. They will send a police officer or notify a police officer for every call. They, like our dispatch, can monitor and make entry into Clean NCIC for us. A few additional things that County 911 has is they have additional staff available. They typically have dispatcher for fire, EMS, and police. I believe after nine o'clock, they sometimes have a fourth additional dispatcher to support those currently working. They do have some additional technology, such as an ability to give a general location of the person, place, and call to them through GPS, whatever method. County 911 dispatcher dispatches all fire and EMS departments in Crawford County, plus the City of Titusville Police Department and other small police departments in the county. This, the last statement is kind of a no-brainer. It goes without saying that Muteville police officers may be told to stand by by county control, for example, if they're handling a large structure fire in Crawford. Like I said, that goes without saying it's understandable if those three dispatchers, maybe four, are handling a large incident in Crawford, and an officer calls in, traffic, non-emergency traffic, he's going to be asked to stand by. And talking to other chiefs in the county, that was one thing that they, it was a common theme, it's something that they reiterated to us, that, you know, they were told to stand by many times. It was just one of their, probably the only complaint I had received from other chiefs. So the differences that would have a major impact. And you can see the chart there. The first one is send an officer on every call where 911 will do that, and ours will not necessarily do that, only if it's a police matter and only if it's an obvious, if it's a, someone calls in and the dispatcher's not going to make a determination by themselves if every call is a police matter or a civil in nature, if it's something that could go either way, they send an officer. If it's something that they can handle, which is with general information or for them in crisis, whatnot, they will do it that way. County will call the officer in charge or dispatch an officer for all of those calls. A big one for, for us is dispatching auxiliary police. Our dispatchers, dispatcher, our auxiliary police can, they are their point of contact during all emergency calls for service, for quality of life events in the city. The dispatch center is, is not able at this time to dispatch our auxiliary police department. The monitoring of the live feed camera system would not be a possibility for county control, and citizens' access to face-to-face contact with a dispatcher would be eliminated after four o'clock, and they would be unable to make direct entry into the RMS system for us. There could, there would be a general download of information into the call. It would not be all the information into the person's screen or vehicle's screen. There would be the information for the officer they saw to put into those particular There would be the information for the officer they itself to put into those particular categories. And one of the things I wanted to note, it's not the presentation, but for the citizen access face-to-face contact with a dispatcher after four o'clock, it's kind of a big one. You know, we preach a community policing philosophy here and, you know, we've tried very hard to be part of the community and that's what community policing is, is to have a, to be a stakeholder in the community. Have your employees, have our officers feel like they're stakeholders in the community. They're a major player. Likewise, our dispatchers have that same responsibility put on. They are a stakeholder in the community, in the community policing picture. I'm sure the county dispatchers have plenty of pride in their community, but the face-to-face contact's not there. Our dispatchers know a lot of the people in town, especially those in town that may need help more often than others. They know them by first name. They'll come in and speak to the dispatchers personally. An officer may not be the person you always want to talk to, but they're comfortable and they're the only person they know sitting somewhere willing to talk to in the morning. I think it's important. Okay, what's routing areas we're doing by county and department? So these are by county. The Erie County Jail is currently not accepting individuals for offenses such as public drunkenness. Erie City Police Department, they are dispatched by Erie County 911, but they maintain the use of their own holding cells at the department by having an officer on duty at all times who's assigned to this function. Mill Creek Police Department, they maintain their own dispatch operations and they maintain use of their own holding cells. Other small township of borough police in Erie County, they go out of service if they have a public drunk offender that they need to take care of or monitor. And when I say go out of service, they won't answer calls coming in anymore, the calls would then go to the state police. And/or some call in officers and on overtime. The Nango County Jail likewise is not accepting individuals for offenses such as public drunkenness. Loyal City Police Department, they maintain their own dispatch operations and they maintain use of their own holding cells. City of Franklin, maintaining its own dispatch operations and they maintain use of their own holding cells. Down in Butler County, their jail likewise will not accept persons arrested for offenses such as public drunkenness. Butler City PD, which is ironically across the street from the county jail, who can operate their offenders across the street to be housed, they utilize the 911 system down there, but they do maintain their own holding cells. They do this by calling the officers for overtime or if manpower exists, they use their current manpower on the street. Crawford County. Crawford County Jail, we have spoken to the warden and at this time, he sent a letter and there was not a blanket, we're not, we won't take your public drunks, he gave an explanation. But the short of it is they're unable to accommodate the level of public drunkenness arrests our department makes, therefore he had to decline accepting our public drunk He was kind enough, however, to, and what we've always leaned on them for is if we have an offender who is out of control, being violent, or trying to hurt himself, someone that we feel that we're not capable of keeping safe in our holding cells because of what's happening, they're agreeing to continue to take that person into their custody at that time. They have more resources available to keep that person safe, restraining, et cetera. Okay, the reason we're here, well, there'd be a savings. Currently, our 2021 dispatch budget is $192,527. I show there a potential reduction of $35,000 and that comes from one of our longtime dispatchers. It is, I don't have the date, but it's probably nearing retirement. She is on the defined benefit plan. An employee who would replace that dispatcher would be on the defined contribution. The savings of that for that one employee is $35,000. So knowing that that is going to occur most likely in the near future, I show our annual cost of being $157,527 for dispatch. If we went to county, we would require a receptionist at the desk during daylight hours to accept payments, data entry for warrants, PFAs. And the cost of that person with benefits would be $50,000. The overtime costs for an officer to monitor our cells is the only way feasible that we could see if we went to county and lost our dispatch to watch our public drunkenness offenders. And that comes to $72,720. And that number is the middle of the road. That's the average officer's overtime salary, not to talk. When we call lists for overtime by union contracts, we have to call them those senior first. If all the senior guys decided they wanted these overtimes, that $72,000 would be much higher.
Steph, could you go over the double asterisk point on the left there, how you got to that number?
Yeah, absolutely. So as you see there, it says we use the holding cells an average of 277 times for offenses that would have the individual held for a period of six hours before release. This would leave us with an average of 1,662 overtime hours needed to monitor these prisoners. So we took those hours and used the average officer's overtime rate to come up with the cost of $72,720. The 277 times a year we use it for these type of offenses, we use the holding cells times 10 for individuals on, you know, awaiting hearings and so forth, but this is for the after-hours where the dispatch operation within the county would really affect it. So we would need a couple additional things for the vehicles, being the mobile data terminals, the laptop computers capable of reaching back to the city building to our RMS system and capable of accessing the state's systems such as JNet and so forth. Those costs are relatively low at $2,700. However, that is $2,700 a year. The initial purchase is one thing, but there's yearly maintenance fees that they charge us for all these things and that's what it is. So our annual cost to build a county would be $124,970, which would show us with the savings from our current situation of, or the Hold that number though till we get to the rest of these slides, that's not the final number.
Mike, a quick question.
Yes.
When you were doing your research on this.
Yes.
Did you extract figures of how many times the other departments that you cited use or have the people in the six-hour hold, it is six hours what they use more or less?
Most or more, you know, at Crawford County Jail, if they were housing someone for a public drunkenness offense, someone out of control, we brought to them is 12 hours typically. No, I did not, you know, Erie County, Mill Creek, how many times are they using their resources or I don't have those figures.
The city of Butler, I had a long talk with their chief, his numbers seemed very similar to ours. In comparing numbers, I didn't have them, but he was just talking about how many arrests they made and they're going to be very similar to us.
Okay, so a big question is who will contact auxiliary police? Auxiliary police is a volunteer group who have been providing the city of Meadville with quality traffic control for many years. Police department dispatchers have played a large part in the success of the AP program. Auxiliary police operate under a low-band radio frequency while the police department in-car and portable radios operate under a high-band frequency. So currently neither can receive or transmit to the other. The officers on the street cannot directly talk to auxiliary police, they cannot correctly talk to us. They directly talk to our dispatchers, we directly talk to the dispatchers and any information is relayed through the dispatcher. Officers on the scene of emergency have responsibilities. They cannot wait or be bored while they attempt to call or dispatch out the APs. That's to explain why an officer, why can't an officer call the auxiliary police or dispatch them for us? We run on what we feel is the bare minimum crew to handle the amount of calls we get in the city. That means our supervisor, our sergeant is a working sergeant. We expect him to take as many incidents as the other patrol officers and they have to. We handle way too many incidents for them not to. They don't have the time or luxury to get on the phone and call and try to get AP out to an intersection during a fire. If we put a low-band radio in their car, they wouldn't necessarily be able to have the time to sit in their car and try to call for you, because they need to be out handling the scene, supervising the patrol units for one, but also they may be the only officer on the scene because the other officers are handling other calls. So we just don't see that as being a possibility. The importance of the auxiliary police in the services that they provide during emergencies and planned events cannot be overstated. The financial impact of not having their assistance, we surely drive a budget deficit or require cancellation of many quality of life events happening in the city. It's one thing, you have to sit back and think about all the great things we have going on this town and the events we have that everybody enjoys and every one of those, you almost always see auxiliary police because they're playing the big part of that. They're keeping the road shut down, the people on the roadway that's now turned into a car or market safe. They may not be the ones you're interacting with, but they're making this happen. Without them, we couldn't have these events. The alternative would be to play or to pay police officers overtime to have these events. Well, that would surely, you know, cost way too much money. In addition though, the officers, if we're forcing them in on overtime to watch prisoners in a cell, then trying to force them in on overtime to man the parade, I can only force a guy in so many hours of overtime before we start to see problems in their performance and their life and none of us want to see that happen.
Mike, another quick question.
Yes.
Do auxiliary police show up fires, traffic control?
Yes.
Who dispatches them to that?
Her dispatch.
Our dispatch?
So we have spoken to the captain of auxiliary police. He states that having communication with the dispatch while on scene of an emergency or planned event is a must and not optional for their continued success. He said, "How am I supposed to man an emergency, have my men at the right places at the right times, relay to you the current conditions if I have no one to talk to?" And I understand, I can't foresee the program continuing the way it is without the dispatch center and the police department to communicate with.
If you go back to the ice trip a few years ago, or even when we have, you know, massive flooding, like twice a year, our dispatch is on the phone with our UPs directing them to this intersection, the lights on here, I want you to go there. So it's not just, you know, go here, they sit there, it's a constant communication of where they're needed.
And likewise, they provide us with lots of information. Maybe the waters have receded, this intersection, they notify dispatch, they're approved to open that intersection back up. I mean, there's numerous things, they give us manpower that we can only dream of having. Next slide here. Okay, the effects of the transfer on patrol staffing levels. So as we said earlier, the 911 center dispatches an officer on all calls. We actually did a test year in 2015 where all calls to the police department were cataloged as they would be to the 911 center, as if an officer were to be sent or notified. It came out to an additional 6,000 calls. In 2018, or in 2015, we would have handled 18,941 incidents. In 2019, under a normal year, we handled 12,789, which is pretty average for us. We fluctuate between 12,000 to 14,000 calls, the way we handle it now, 6,000 extra calls a year. We would ask for two additional officers to handle that kind of influx of calls if you wish to maintain the same levels of service that we provide now. Meaning, right now, an officer is anywhere in the city within three minutes for an emergency. Unless we're all pie-up, which an officer on these great streets, we're still there within two to three minutes. There's just other things that we do now. Pick up bicycles. There's just a array of things that would probably, we'd be hard pressed to completely with 6,000 additional calls. So entry level patrol costs to city, $72,000 a year after benefits. If we did receive those two officers, that'd be $144,000. And I think that cost would get us to lower at the same level we are now without our dispatch. So if staffing levels are not increased, transports to and from CCJ during the day, we weigh heavily on our detectives. We would have to ask them to start doing, and doing some of these transports for us to the officers would simply be busy on calls. Some of my worries in that would be, we just recently received a stock grant, $37,500 a year to fund a percentage of one of my detective salaries. We dedicated ourselves to a certain number of hours of that officer's time being dedicated to those activities that are outlined in the stock grant. And if he is now transporting people and picking up the slack with these 6,000 additional calls, I'm unsure where we would be.
Doesn't the sheriff's department transport prisoners back and forth from the state towns?
Only for county court. So anything that happens over at the courthouse, the judicial center, the sheriff's department's responsible for those transports. We're unfortunately responsible for any of our transport, for our hearings, arrangements, and so forth.
He gets it.
That's all for my presentation. Anybody have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
In all fairness, Larry and Autumn have not been through this process as we have.
Right.
But I think Jim has through that process, I guess. Sean and I have gone through that process. So I would like to hear the questions from them first and then I have a list of questions for both you and the county. And Commissioner, thank you for being here tonight. And Greg, I appreciate you being here, you're one of our officers and you'll be able to help me answer some of the questions from the county related. So, but I think in all fairness, I'd like to give the other three council members an opportunity to ask questions and then Sean, you and I can pick up from there. opportunity to ask questions, and then Sean, you and I can pick up from there.
I'm going to throw it off to one of the three of you, if you have any.
For questions?
Sure.
Sure. I'm wondering to what extent the county, 911 or county emergency services was consulted specifically on the items that you brought up, in regards to what they can do and can't do.
We had a phone call, and we had a person meeting.
Without, is it Alan that's in charge of this?
Actually, Mr. Beveridge is in charge.
Do we handle offenses differently from other departments? In other words, I mean, I alluded earlier to my public drunkenness, and you said that at least one city is probably similar to us in numbers, although they do have more residents in that city. How do people like Titusville, a lot of places like Titusville, handle their public drunkenness? Or do they just make an offense where it is cited and the people go on their way?
That could be a possibility in a certain instance. That's a lot of liability for an officer to stop someone and cite him for public drunkenness, saying you're a danger to yourself or others, and then release you. That kind of doesn't really fit. I would say, one thing I've said at eight times in this conversation is, Meadville, we're unique. We're not the same, it is very hard for me to compare, and I try, and I ask, you know, they just don't have the same number of public drunk arrests that we do. Or, you know, are we harder on public drunk arrests? I don't think so. I mean, the people that are cited for public drunkenness, this is for their safety. I mean, the community's safety, but, you know, nine out of 10 times, they leave the cells in the morning and thank you for keeping them safe. We just, the amount of bars we have downtown, and the amount of blocking that's provided to them in the city, it's just, it's different than Titusville. It's different than Mill Creek, I mean, we're just, we are unique in that way.
I just have something to, last time, five years ago, they said that 31 hours a week was done, the dispatch was done by an officer. Is it still like that now?
Yeah. So it, a lot of this, as you remember from last time, is different, has lots changed, but some of it stays the same. An officer does man the desk, I don't know if it's 31 hours a week anymore.
So when I had, at one point, I had a part-time dispatcher that was handing about 56 hours a week. That's now down. I have not looked to replace those hours, because I was not going to hire a new employee just to have to let them go with the short amount of time. So we're probably still right around there.
I just wondered that, because we had said before, it was 77% of an officer's time is spent as dispatching, so if you didn't have, did that 77%?
Unfortunately, over the last four or five years, I've had so many injuries that I've actually, at times, cut down my part-timers hours, because I had officers who'd been injured on duty that were taking up all the hours. So rather than have someone just off the workman's comp, I was able to-
Explain that to them, because I remember that from before.
So if an officer's injured and had to work a late duty function, we use dispatch for that. I had an officer who was, had a bad injury to his knee back in 2015, had to have another surgery a year ago, about two years ago now? I'm losing track, had several hurt. So he spent almost a whole year recovering, and I just filled his hours as many as I could, and dispatched.
So when you said there's, we'd have to replace two officers, or you'd have to add two, are you considering that, one of them, or two?
No, I would say two additionally, and I'm very glad you brought that up, because it's true. Sometimes close to 31 hours a week, an officer is sitting at the desk. That officer usually has been, since our tenure as the police department, it's been a injured officer. He couldn't be on the streets anyway. So his time is light duty time, is being fulfilled on the desk. If he was hurt at home, he could be, instead of getting light duty, he could be at home using sick time. But in a lot of these cases, officer's hurt at work. So instead of sitting at home on workman's comp, he's at the police department, working the desk, and we hope that practice is keeping our workman's comp premiums affordable. I think without that, you, no one can say for sure, but-
Another question I had was, you said that everybody, if you called 911, they would dispatch the police to every, they would dispatch a police officer to every call?
If they call and ask for the Meadville City Police Department to talk to an officer or anything.
Okay, I was just wondering, because before, we had talked about it, and it would be, they would call a sergeant who was in charge, and they would determine-
They would do that if we asked them to, yeah, that hasn't changed, but like the sergeant calling out the auxiliary police.
Auxiliary police is a special, people don't understand auxiliary police. I've been here long, I understand it, it's very critical, and I understand how you guys handle it, that is very unique.
Right. But without releasing our, you know, our staffing numbers, who's on, how many guys are on the street at any given time in the night, it's very unlikely that we have a sergeant available to take all these additional phone calls and make these decisions that would cut back. That essentially takes that one guy from handling, he's on the phone, or he's handling an incident. I mean, we have to decide which task we want him to do.
And I was wondering, like, who decides now, the dispatcher, whoever happens to be the dispatcher at the time, is the one that decides which call is the most important? And sometimes it's a police officer, and sometimes it's someone that you trained.
Yeah, they'll triage a call when it comes in. Some of the calls are very obvious, you know, this is obviously not a police matter, even though they're asking for a police officer, they can explain to them, now this is a police matter, this is being more broadly handled by maybe the district magistrate, or maybe they put in contact with crisis. So dispatchers like that initial triage. If they're confused, it's kind of one of those gray areas, and then she'll put it through to the sergeant or officer in charge, and he'll make the call.
When it comes to which call is more important, you know, they come in in order, if an emergency call comes in after a vehicle unlock comes in, you know, they're going to stop what's going on with the vehicle unlock, and of course, send the emergency call.
You did a vehicle unlock for me this winter, because I had locked my keys while I was running. Someone told me if I'd have called, and it wasn't running, that you couldn't come and do it, and I don't know if you'd have ever locked.
We, that's, we would come for those.
Well, they were there in minutes for the, thank you.
Okay, I got a list. So let's start with, the municipality or the city of Meadville has a responsibility to providing safety for our community. That's our number one job here, along with making sure we have good streets and things. So with that being said, one of my big concerns, first of all, let's start with the cost involved. This was done in 2015, and I believe, and you may have to help me with this, Andy would know the number probably, but I think the saving back then was 190, 160, 160,000? Is that?
Yeah, it was more.
Well, let's just play $150,000. So now we're only looking at a savings around $31,000, $32,000. So keep that in back of your head, because I'm going to come back to that question. With the APs, we are very unique in this, in our community. We're very fortunate for these individuals. These are volunteers that are out there during the rain, sleet, hail, and snow, protecting the community, whether they're protecting the fire scene for insurance purposes, if they have to be there all night, car accidents, flooding, you went through all that. So those individuals are very well, I respect them very much, because they saved this city thousands of dollars in overtime in both police and fire, because if you weren't there to protect the fire scene, a fireman would have been there protecting it. So they're, they're up here on my list of the savings for the taxpayers of the city of Meadville. And my concern is, when we had this conversation with the county prior, Kevin Nichols at that time was the director, it was told to us that they would be dispatching our APs. Greg, are we still in that position with the county?
Your honor, with all due respect, we acknowledge that we could make a phone call, just the same as theirs do to start that list. From my memory, when I worked as a city police officer, the dispatcher working there had a phone call list, a call person, would you say? So you dispatch, followed that person, and then it just kind of started the ripple effect where they would call each other, get the response. During our meetings with the chiefs and Andy Walker at the time, we acknowledged that we would be able to do that too. We just do not have the radio equipment that they utilize, the old VHF channel. As I discussed with them, it's probably end-of-life equipment, that probably, when it starts to break through, you guys, I don't know how you'll deal with that situation, so it's probably not the equipment that's made anymore. So that was where that lies. We did acknowledge that we would be able to start the communication for them, but we would have no ongoing means unless they occupied your frequency with your patrol officers.
Well, that was my next question. So they're on analog still, correct, system or?
They're on low band.
Low band? So to get communication from them to the vehicle, or whoever the officer is, we would have to upgrade their radio system to match your current, correct?
That would make the most sense, rather than trying to buy low-band radios for police cars.
Okay, so let's just say, this magic number's out there, that we're going to purchase new radios for the AP, so that you have direct communication with them from our police officers to the location of where they're at. If they would do that, would you still be able then to contact with them, or is, you're just going to make the initial call and that's it? If we get you the radio system that you need to be able to talk to them?
Any discussion that we had up to this point was, we would make that initial call with them. I mean, that's pretty much where the discussion lied. We didn't discuss ongoing communication. It's mostly because of the lack of ability to communicate.
But if we took care of that lack of communication, would that be something you guys could discuss?
I'm not prepared to give you a yes or no answer on that, but we can certainly discuss that.
Okay, in all fairness, thanks. So with the APs, they're dispatched by our dispatch right here in the city. So let's put that aside, because the APs, we understand, are very important to the community. So I would want to make sure, one, our APs are always safe as our community is, and have that communication with our officers. So if you have the APs out there, and we have an officer on duty, is that what you still call the officer, sergeant?
The officer, sergeant.
So he's there at the cruiser, and he's in the middle of an emergency call, whether it's an accident, drunkenness, or whatever, and he needs to have those APs. And would that be his responsibility to have all that communication with the APs, still hold the other radio, trying to communicate back to the other officer? So he's going to be holding two radios during a crisis, trying to figure out and plan?
We don't think that's even possible.
Okay. But if you would update the radios, that would still, then it would be possible for your officers to have communication?
We'd have to have a different frequency. The APs communicate with each other quite a bit when they're directing traffic, just their needs, you know, this car's coming through, I have this happening. So their radio traffic, so when I first was hired, we were all on the same radio frequency. So events like the Halloween parade, any parade, or any accident really, they were, you know, great enough to be handling all the traffic control, but if we were on a different call, we would walk on each other trying to radio in. So when we eventually went to the high band, we purposely left them where they were, so they had their own radio frequencies, so we weren't walking on each other.
Okay. So let's go back to, if we no longer have a dispatch in the city, my understanding is county won't take public drunkenness, is that correct?
That is what they said.
So as an officer, when you take your oath of office that I give you, you're there to protect all of the citizens. So if you have an individual that's talked, you know, under the influence, I don't care if it's drugs or alcohol, isn't it your responsibility to make sure that they're safe? I mean, that they don't bring harm to themselves and maybe blow out a couple windows on Chestnut Street? So would that not be sense to bring them in and quarantine them, or hold them for the six hours until they dry out?
That's precisely why we do it.
Okay. Because I'm not sure if you all remember, when, was it a year ago, two years ago, we got a call in the middle of the night that some individuals were intoxicated and blew out three windows on Chestnut Street. So they were intoxicated, I'm sure you could probably arrest them for different, something different. But my whole point being, if you have someone intoxicated, I felt it was our responsibility to make sure that individual's not on the road driving, not putting himself or anyone else in danger. So with that being said, how are you going to handle drunkenness after the oath of office that you took, if you come across somebody that's intoxicated?
Officers are still going to have to make the arrest. The problem there lies, once we get them back to the holding cell, that officer is now tied up until we get someone in on overtime, which, at 2:00 in the morning, and my phone rings, by the time I answer the phone and realize what this person's asking of me, roll out of bed, get rest, and then drive to work, could be anywhere from 20 minutes to an hour. Now you took that officer off the street, monitoring the holding cell, when more calls are going on. So now we have less manpower on the street, trying to deal with all the same problems, whether we get a dispatch, they would monitor the holding cell, we drop the person off once we make sure they're okay, officers are back on the street patrolling.
Okay, so let's add another step to that. What happens to a female? What happens then? Because I believe we have all male officers correct.
Yes, we still have, at times, when there's a male officer, meaning the desk, it'd be the same problem you have with a male officer, it's all through closed circuit TV that he monitors.
Okay.
It certainly makes a difference when there's two people in the building, whether they get a male officer and a male dispatcher and a female that's been placed under arrest. I certainly think having two in the building is a much safer scenario for accusations and liability than a female officer by himself watching that female.
Okay, so we just talked that few minutes, just on somebody that's intoxicated or needing assistance. So let's go down, if you have to put somebody into custody, and we don't have a dispatch, what happens with that individual? Walk me through what the step is.
So if we place somebody under arrest for a more serious offense, and we run them into the police department, and we were going to start our interviews, and so forth, that individual will be placed in the holding cell. Under current scenario, the dispatcher would be watching them. If another call came out, that officer who had placed a person under arrest could leave, handle other calls, assist the other officers. Under the scenario without the dispatch, that officer would be not be able to leave. He would be, I don't want to say stopped, but he would be forced to stay at the police department, would not be able to leave and back up another officer for any reason, with someone unattended in the holding cell. So he would be basically out of service until the conclusion of that incident, meaning he had done his interviews, had his paperwork done, and the plea, he had his criminal complaint charges done, and that person was then able to be transported to the county jail and be arraigned by the on-call district magistrate.
So when you have to take someone out to county, can you just give me a quick timeframe of how long that officer's out of the city, or not?
It's a 12-minute trip there, 12-minute trip back. If you're lucky, you get in and out, and you're there for a few minutes. If you're not so lucky, you could be there half an hour, then drive back, so you can be out of the city for 45 minutes. I'd say more typically, you're out of the city for a half hour.
So Greg, I got a couple of questions for you. As a resident in the city of Meadville, our councilman locked his keys in the car. So if a city resident would lock their keys in the car, or have that issue, can, would you dispatch, can they call 911? Would you make that transfer to the city? How would that work?
We do that all the time. Honestly. We dispatch for multiple municipal police departments. Some of them have chosen not to do lockouts anymore, but the city of Titusville still does. We've received multiple calls on a weekly basis where people have locked their house, locked their keys out of a vehicle, or even out of their house. We triage the call, and we send it to an available officer.
So you do provide that service as needed? So you do provide that service as needed?
We do, yes. 911 is, per se, I guess everyone thinks that as the emergency only, but probably a large portion of our work, just like the, the police officers, is non-emergency issues. What may you consider an emergency may not be an emergency to someone else. What we do, we have a lot of things that don't require lights and sirens on a very regular basis.
Another question I have for you, with the, let me think a second, because I, I may combine the two questions together, so just give me a second. So when you would take and receive a call from the city, what I was going to look at is for, for security reasons, for some of our buildings. Unfortunately, we had a suicide down at the parking garage a few weeks ago. Those, those parking garage has the cameras, as they were talking about. Is there any way that you can link into our camera system? Is there somebody that can watch the Diamond Park, watch the parking garage? I think there's what, four that we do? Maybe more?
Parking garage, market alley, Diamond Park, the entire city building, around the building, the new, the new exchange spots. Or, that was a big, big thing for those that are concerned a lot.
Is that something the county can handle? I mean?
We, we have, the technology is there. I don't know that we would want to accept the liability for monitoring your cameras and being responsible if we happen to miss something that was going on. I mean, it's, you know, we, we do have other obligations to, to other areas of county as well.
Yeah, I'm not asking for commitment, I, I'm just wondering, you know, when, what technology is today, sure.
Absolutely.
I can watch my front door from here, so.
Understandably, yeah, the, the technology is available in there, it's just, I think, more of a liability issue for us. Our telecommunicators were, you know, busy away from those cameras, and if something happened in front of the place, you know, are we held responsible for that? Certainly a concern.
And then the other question I'll ask you, Greg, because it, it was a concern when I was in enforcement, that today's technology, is it different? Are the police officers put on standby over a fire emergency, or can, can you kind of share that?
Sure. The, the, the short answer is yes. Sometimes you have to be placed on standby for a very short period of time. As I discussed with them, if they're in an emergency situation, and they need to talk to us, we'll find the time to talk to them. We'll never put someone's safety over, over a non-emergency call. But we do have multiple people staffed at any given time, so there's, there are days up there that get very, very heavy, no doubt. And like you said, large incidents, like the fire in Cochran, I think was referenced, there are times where we may ask you to stand by if you have non-emergency traffic. With that in mind, we also discussed that we have entered into the higher level of technology with mobile data terminals, and we discussed with them as well, that if you are on an emergency call, and the dispatchers are busy, you actually have the opportunity to enter your information in from your, from your cruiser into the mobile data terminal for a non-emergency call. So it's documented and logged.
Okay, and another, just a quick question, sorry guys, these are questions that we need to know about. With, with the water authority, if there, there is an issue, people can call our dispatcher, will that still be the same with your 911?
We do do after-hours callouts for some things, but that's something, again, that we would have to discuss. That's usually something not really in our area that we've dealt with as far as handling up authorities' water problems.
Because what usually happens, if they make a phone call and they don't get answered, they call me at 2:00 in the morning, a few times.
We could transfer right to your phone if you'd like.
Oh, you can, it's on all the time.
Technology.
As long as you, you give me my salary, that's great. No, I'm just joking, of course, but, so, without our dispatch, what's your testament on overtime to cover?
So that, that's it for the holding cells, that is in there. We estimated that 1,662 overtime hours for us, the holding cells, at a cost of $72,720. And like I said, that's a mid-range figure. And then, we, I didn't do a figure on, you know, with auxiliary police, say, they said, you know, we, we want dispatched, we want to have communications, and it comes, it falls down to the police department to provide traffic control for events. I, I didn't figure, we didn't figure out what those numbers would be. I mean, the Halloween parade in and of itself, we'd probably...
At one time, before the AP, the Halloween parade was all hands on deck, so every police officer was on overtime for the Halloween parade. And you get something like Thunder in the City, or the multi-day events, I couldn't imagine how we staffed it, I was going to keep my people in 24 hours.
I just had another fact to add. It's a mobile, mobile data terminal?
Yes.
Okay, is that what's in the cars?
Yes.
And that's in, in every car now?
No, all but two. And that's why, that's the addition of the two?
That's, that's what I was wondering. Uh, we must, we must have bought that when I was in council or something, because I happened to be, and someone showed it to me, and it was really amazing.
Yeah, and he was just kind of phasing them in.
That's what it was, and I, I was really impressed with that, I always tell people that. The other thing I was just wondering was, the dispatchers, all the, all officers are certified to dispatch to, besides the dispatchers?
All the two. When we first went through it, I just certified my bottom five or six guys, and as time went on, we've left, you know, I've had many agencies fill, it just has built up from the bottom. So my top two guys are not certified, the rest of the department has.
I just, I just wondered, I knew they did before.
So basically, the dispatchers that Greg has, they're certified as well, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, and they also have rapport, I'm quite sure, with, if they get frequent calls like you, you may get the same person calling over similar situations, right? So I, I'm just confused as, why there seems, to me, it sounds like, it seems like we're trying to work against, and isn't there some way we could work together? Or is it just strictly a financial? I know we spent money on that building, but you're, you're saying you've got to buy equipment here, or you, and you have equipment. Isn't there some, some other alternative that we can come to? I mean, this is all one community, even though it is a county and a city.
And we currently, you know, we work together probably now more than anybody would realize. Although, of, of the amount of calls that we take in at the police department, only 5% of those are sent down from the, from county. You know, there, any given day, I have a dispatcher, and they're back and forth. The county assists us whenever we ask. Any issue, I mean, I can't think of one time they've, they've ever not been willing to help. So there is that collaboration already occurring, it's just not in the public eye. You know, is that helping the bottom dollar financially? No, but, you know, the, we've been great with some of the things that, as they advance, and they, they continue to be willing to assist us, you know, those advancements also are a bonus for us also. So, yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but, yeah, we, there is already that, that relationship.
So, and like you said, there, there's probably things that the, the general public doesn't understand, I'm quite sure, why there's, this debate is going on, whether to move it or not. And I haven't seen or heard anybody really give a good explanation. So I have, I have people that work with me, one gentleman, his wife is a dispatcher, and they're confused, and they're, they're also worried, because it's their income, she's been there for quite a while. And her argument is, we've been doing this, why all of a sudden a change? And I think the general public has a lot of questions about why this is going on, other than just, i- isn't it just financial?
It's, in my opinion, it's just financial. It's, our dispatchers do a phenomenal job, and I can never take anything away from what the county dispatchers do, ever. They're all more than qualified.
They probably explain all their extra tasks my dispatchers do. So, from the clerical work that they help my administrative assistant with, entering citations, to anything else with the PFAs, the warrants. And then, some of the bigger issues, you know, the auxiliary police, and we've talked about for quite a while, and then the underlying issue of the holding cells. So we're both offering that same dispatch function. My dispatchers are tailored just to the needs of my department, to make it operate fully. County's tailored to not only the rest of the county, but also multi-disciplines, they're dispatching fire, police, EMS. My dispatchers, for the most part, just dispatch police, but they serve a myriad of other functions within my department to help it run.
I, I got another question, it's, it's for Greg, actually. Before, we were talking about, five years ago, we talked about how you were going to be able to take text messages. Can you, can they take, can people in 911 text message to you?
To us?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, we, we can accept text messages.
Okay, so that was, that was brand, I must have come in nine, five years, we were talking about it.
There's, the 911 centers are public safety entering points are very quickly becoming even more technology epic. The wireless platforms that calls come in on, the other platforms that we use are just creating phenomenal additional resources for us to use, to help provide much better information.
Okay, like, okay, when, my son one time dialed 911, and he was like three years old. So, immediately they called me back and said, is there an emergency there? You know, which, I just, you know, and I, you know, and they said, oh, my son, you talked to him, and just blabbered at him. But, so if somebody was to dial 911 on their cellphone, would you have to call it back and send somebody, or?
Our policy in-house is to, if we have a, a 911 hangup from a cellphone or a landline, we call it back. If we make contact with somebody, they just verify you. Nine times out of 10, it's an accidental dial, and we just document it as such. If it is something that seems problematic, or something, you know, puts the hair on the back of your neck to stand up a little bit, we refer that to law.
I, I'm just curious. I was just, so if someone texts 911, and just, you know, started to text, and someone would check into it?
Yes.
And they can GPS it and figure out where they're at?
Generally, yes.
Okay, that's interesting.
I do have another quick question. Does the, does the county still use our, the cells for hearings for the magistrate, or that, do they do all that by video now?
Currently with COVID, it's all video, as long as the offender agrees for his hearing to be held, in that manner. But the county, so who are you referring to using our holding cell?
Well, if Sam has a case or a hearing, and they have to bring a prisoner in.
Yeah, so individual departments have MOU with us, Westmead Township, Burnet Township, Allegheny College, we have an understanding where we allow them to use our holding cells for those reasons. Right now, Allegheny College, being essentially a private police department, if they were that individual, if they needed to incarcerate for a short period of time, I should say incarcerate, but hold for a public drunkenness, we have an MOU with them, they'll bring that person to us for that six-hour time period. Through the MOU, they also have to monitor the holding cells, so that they're responsible for, for their detainee. And the same thing with Westmead or Burnet, if anyone uses our cells for the MOU, they're responsible for monitoring that individual.
So their dispatch wouldn't change the MOU then? Not having a dispatch would not change the MOU?
If we didn't have dispatch, I, I don't know that I'd have just another police department just sitting in our, in our building, monitoring our prisoner.
Those are the things that we need to think about when you go to make decisions, that, you know, we may think we're saving a few dollars here and there, but we could actually be causing more of a cost, and, and more of an issue. Sometimes you don't want to fix a rule that's not broken, and I'm not saying, we have a good relation with the county, and within, and the dispatch, has nothing to do with that. This was only brought up for one purpose, one purpose only, was to save tax dollars. So that's the number, if you're looking at this, Larry, that's why we did this, is savings on the taxpayer, if it was a true savings, and that's what we wanted to make sure of. My only last question, I'm going to give you the same opportunity as I did the past, chief, what is your recommendation to council when it comes to 911 dispatch?
Like I said before, we've never doubted their ability to dispatch. Things have changed drastically since the last five years. The biggest thing that it changes, the jail now saying that they cannot take our public drugs. Five years ago, they said they could, and the last two times I've talked to them, they said they will not. So, just for the, how our department runs, the tasks that the dispatchers do, and then this holding cells, my recommendation is to keep my dispatch in-house.
Okay, so now I'm going to go back to my very first question. How did we, how, what is, what, what was that number? Why was the number so drastic, of 125,000 difference? Is it just the five years?
Yeah, but, so the, the major change, as the chief described, was the holding cells and the officer overtime, because the time the county was able to, but a lot has changed in five years, and, and what they're dealing with out there, they, they just don't have the space in the holding area for these types of offenders they have the hands for. So the main difference is the holding cells, and then, I, I don't think we focused so much last time on auxiliary police, for whatever reason. So that, that, that's a big difference. And then there's, of course, the, the total budget. We've gone now to, at the time, we had two, or all three full-time employees on the defined benefit pension system. Now, two of the three are on the defined contribution rather than the benefit, and the third is, is short to come, so that's a huge cost savings for the city, and that has driven the, the number down.
When you were preparing this presentation?
Yes.
In your dealings with other police departments, did you happen to discover whether there might be some opportunities for charges for services? The unlawful could be a good example. Do other police departments charge for certain services?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And there's physical services, no, but, you know, accident reports, we charge for that. And we handle a national handful of accidents in the city of Meadville, and all of those accidents, the insurance companies want our report, they send in a request, they are charged for that. So there are, there are fee-based things, but for police officer's action, we have no, you know, no fees or, or anything built or so.
Thank you. Eric, just for one second, so, the actual 911 system is funded by Act 12, which is a dollar sixty-five per phone line. So if you're in a city in Meadville, you have a laptop that, or an iPad that has a phone line connected, or a cellphone, or a hardwire, that's where the funding comes from. So, Larry, I guess to answer your question, we really want to make sure everybody understands, we still want you to call 911. If you have a true emergency in Meadville, and you need the police, we want you to call the dispatchers, and they can, they do this all the time now, I can attest. If you're a real pickle, and you need police, the idea of Act 12 was to consolidate people into using 911. We don't want people to go to a seven-digit number, and from a guy who bought it at the ambulance service, who, 7247595, was there since 1958, people would call that number repeatedly for emergencies, we, we don't want that. So we, we try to have people use 911. So, there is a relationship, and I appreciate both your, your presentation. As the 911 center goes, we, we have no skin in this game. Director, Benner will go to work tomorrow, with his, his confident dispatchers, will continue to do what we do now, we do have a good working relationship. I just want everybody to understand that, it really, we really want people to call 911 for emergencies. We don't, we don't want to, the dispatch that they're providing, the services great for what they do, but we still want, if you're, you're held at night points, you're getting robbed, if you're, if you need the police, you know, 911, that's the idea of the system. And that's really what the system does for everyone. Does it work in the city of Tiesville? Yeah, I think even the mayor of Tiesville and the police chief, they, they have a good working relationship. It's smaller, it's different. I think for a while, they were actually driving their public drugs to the, to jail when they were taking them, which is a long trip, right? It's terribly a long trip. As far as the jail goes, the problem with, with this cell hold is, we're, we're just in a mental health crisis. We're, we're trying to get additional mental health issues, but those, those cells are used for watches, and that's why they're not available, they're occupied a lot sadly. And then, and one of the things we're working on is trying to get additional mental health assistance there. But in, in five years ago, those cells actually weren't, they weren't very busy, they were the, they were the input cells, they, they moved and they transferred, and you guys And you guys, when you're probably going to test, there's just no space. And that's why it did change for the, for the, just to give, just to give the idea. It's sad because we need to work on that, but that's where those, why those cells are occupied now.
Okay. That's good, because I never heard that explanation, you know, to the public. Greg, I want to give you an opportunity. First of all, thank you for being here tonight. Is there anything you want to add? Any comments you'd like to make?
Sure. Just thanks for opting to be here and to speak. I'm not a salesman, and it was never my intention to sell our services to you. If you would need to transfer your dispatch to us, we would make sure that we provide you with a quality service. With my background, I think it's a little bit more unique than what maybe Kevin had five years ago or whatever. I've been a police officer for the city of Meadville for quite some time, and I've been down this road with the consideration of moving to 911 ever since Dave Walker was the police chief. It's been an issue that's come and gone many, many, many times. The Meadville brings up very valid points with, in respect to the public drugs, to the auxiliary police and the savings that that provides for you. The dispatching end of it, we've got that covered for you, no problems at all. You do have those unique things in a city of this size that, you know, you're strapped for, probably difficult to even think of putting more police officers on the street. So those guys can be busy at times. We would. We don't have that opportunity to delineate between criminal matters and non-police matters. So we would at least require some kind of a follow-up by a police officer on many calls that their dispatchers do handle. So that, that is true without a doubt. Their call volume will increase to some extent. We just prioritize everything. So obviously, non-emergency calls, if it came down to it, they would have to wait for their officers to be freed up to handle a non-emergency call, something that's not a crime in progress or something that's a threat to the life of a client. We're here if you need us at any point in time. We had this conversation this year, or again, or again. We weren't happy to answer your questions. If you do need to, need to come up here, we'll be ready for you.
Greg, I had something else. We've got a tour, it used to be downstairs in the cities from the courthouse, not yet a justice, but it was really amazing, the facility and how they handled everything. It was very impressive. Now they moved, and I haven't seen the new one, but it does, just to tell you how impressive it was. But how many calls do you do a day? Because you're county-wide, right?
Yeah, we're county-wide. Our, our phone calls last year, we processed over 100,000 phone calls through Crawford County. 32,000 plus of those were 911 calls. So we handle a whole lot of non-emergency calls. People that do dial our seven-digit numbers as well. Over 32,000 times someone dialed 911 inside Crawford County. Any folks would be more than happy to come up and see our operations if you, that would help you at all. We weren't happy to open up for you.
Any other questions for council? Mikes, thanks for doing this. I know it took a lot of work. Deb, I know you were involved with the numbers on this. I can appreciate all that time and effort you put into it. So let us take this information. I'm going to pull back five years ago and find a comparison of things in my mind. So we'll continue. But I want to thank you guys for being here tonight and also the county. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the county, the county. The council priorities for 2021.
Actually, I had a few other things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For, just a few quick things for our manager's report.
All right. Sorry about that.
Sure. One, an ongoing task we have, the zoning hearings. We always like to give council an opportunity to weigh in. Last week, you would have been provided, we have a zoning hearing coming up this month. It's for a variance, a use variance request to convert a home business hair salon into essentially a standalone hair salon in an R1 district on Upper Pine Street. You would have received that application. There will need to be a hardship shown, that, some kind of hardship that should permit that type of use in that district. You received the application and the ad, and I was curious if council had anything to say, if they wanted to take any position on it, or if they just wanted to let it go to the zoning hearing board for them to consider. Council doesn't have to take a position on it, just wanted to put it out there in case they wanted to. I'm not hearing anything.
I'd send it to the, already appointed.
Okay. Second item I had is Liberty Street Bridge is under construction right now. You'll know it's closed, right next to North Street there. It's where Mill Run goes under North Street and Liberty Street there. They have completed quite a bit of work. They're waiting on some tests, and there's planning to have some paving during the week of April 19th, paving the approaches. And they hope that it can reopen roughly on April 28th. So we're hoping that it does come in then, so that we reopen and the intersection there will be fully operational. Just to remind, want to remind everyone, cleanup day for the city is, again, is on Saturday, May 15th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. $10 per vehicle, and proof of residency would be required. Another meeting, CDBG, first public hearing, it would be a reminder for April 15th, 5:00 p.m. here, in this, in this room here. So if anyone has any, any of the public has anything to say, any ideas they want to have for CDBG funding, that's your opportunity to do so.
That can be televised, what you mean?
It would not be televised. I don't believe it would be televised. I'd have to ask Armstrong, but I don't believe so, no. Two other quick things. We do have a new property maintenance inspector. Brian Boyce had retired, had left the city around Thanksgiving, and we now have Ed Kaufman come, came on board as our new part-time property maintenance inspector. He just started a week or so ago, he's doing pretty well. You'll recall council had lent the Market Authority $50,000 as an advance on a grant some time ago, several months ago, not sure exactly how long ago. That has been paid back with the proceeds from the grant, so now I think all that is owed to the city is about $5,000 from a previous loan to the, to the Market Authority.
They had a line of credit with the ten grand, right?
Yes.
Correct.
And there's still five that's outstanding.
There are five, yes.
So that's great. It's good to get the grant money back.
And lastly, for the manager's report, I just wanted to report publicly, there was, council had an informational meeting with county commissioners on March 31st to discuss how the county, how reassessment process might work, a countywide reassessment process. So it was just an informational meeting. Just wanted to report that publicly, that that meeting had happened. And that's all I had for the manager's report.
Any questions for Gary? So we're going down through the council's priorities for 2021. We just talked about the 911 dispatch. I'll continue with that. Review the marketing of 984 Water Street. I believe we've got some information coming to us about that.
Yes.
Beginning home rule charter process. I don't think we've moved anywhere on that, have we? Anybody on council?
I think we have.
Yeah. Okay. And then the last one was focusing on the countywide reassessment. And the commissioners here tonight, one of the commissioners, Eric Henry, chairman, and Francis Weiderspan spent, I think it was about two, two hours with us, maybe a little longer now. I want to thank you for taking that time to explain how reassessment works, answered quite a bit of our, our questions. You know, we're still going through that process, but we appreciate the time that you guys took that evening, and it was very educational. While you're sitting there, I think I'd like to go one other step, if council would want to do this, to have an educational meeting with our state representative, with the county, to start talking about what the city needs to continue being profitable or at least being above water. So if the county would be willing to do that, and I have not talked to council, but I think that I'd like to recommend that we meet with, with our, with our.
I don't think it would hurt.
Get some answers, maybe.
To be precise, it's not just the city, it is cities and other municipalities.
Yes.
Pandemic.
Pandemic.
Yes.
I'm in favor.
So, Autumn had asked at that meeting about a survey, and the county has offered to go ahead and do that survey. We appreciate you doing that, you know, and you share that with who and when you want.
And we are just going to look for C cap and make sure that this is the most updated one that they have for you.
Sure, sure, sir. Just, I guess for the, for public sake, it was a, a survey, a self-evaluation for counties to do, to look at their, their countywide property assessment and assess whether or not it was outdated or needed to be brought up to date. And the request that I had, had recommended and was hoping to bring to council to make that maybe a formal ask next time, was that that maybe be completed by the end of the year and then presented publicly by the end of 2021. I don't know if that's what we're talking about doing, but that's, the request that I had done, that I can mention, was told to wait to be made formally.
I'm not interested in doing a resolution personally. I take your word as a commissioner that, you know, you'll do the survey, and I'm sure you'll provide that information.
That's my, I didn't really put a plan here in my bag.
That's my personal feelings. You got your government to run, we have our government to run. How about council? I mean, I'm only one. Anybody interested?
Interested in?
Making a formal resolution? Talking about making a formal resolution?
Well, if we're going to, you know, we're saying we want to do things, nothing against him, but I think for the purpose of commitment to the city and to our residents, I think that would show good faith if we're, because then they would see that we're not just running our mouth. If we have a, if it's in black and white, we can show that, yeah, this is something we dedicated ourselves to work on, you know, we have it on this list here, our agenda list, but it's recorded then.
Well, it's a public meeting tonight, and we just made it public.
That's still.
I mean, you can make a motion, you know, get a second, take a vote. It's that simple.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What are you asking us to do? You're asking us to make a motion, formally request that the county conduct this self-evaluation regarding property assessments by the end of 2021 and make those public, make those findings public. I'm, I'm moved, so moved.
Okay, second.
And again, nothing, you know, no disrespect or anything, it's just that, you know, when you're telling people you're going to do something, if you show it in black and white, there's no, you know, it's there, you know, there's no room for argument or, you know, no room for someone saying, no, you didn't do it, we're following through it and it's there, it's going to be on record. Even though it's on record tonight just by video, I think this is the right move.
Any other comments from council? Roll call.
Donna here?
No.
McKnight?
Yes.
Roa?
No.
Vogel?
Hi.
Sterns?
No.
I guess you have as long as you want to do it or not do it.
I'm sure that.
I don't, and I'm just going to say it, I don't understand the reason why not. If he's going to do it, he's saying he's going to go, why don't you want? I don't understand.
I take the man for his word.
That's, I do.
Now, I'm just here for dispatch, Sean.
So do I.
Sorry, sorry about pulling that into that, but, but, so let's move on, because decision was made.
So.
Deb, I mean, you want to make comments, but the decision was made.
The decision was made, but I don't, you know, I don't understand your reasoning for not wanting, he said he's going to do it, so why, why are you not willing to have it on record or have?
Personally, I'll be more than glad to share it personally. We each run our own government, and we have an accountability to the city residents.
Yeah, and that's, and you're telling me that.
But what you're, if you want me to finish, then let me finish. If not, go ahead and continue.
Yeah, I will.
Go ahead.
So what you're saying is that you represent the residents, and the residents, this isn't something that the residents want, would want to do. He's saying he's willing to do it. There's no disrespect or, nor making of, him, trying to make him feel like he's not going to do it. This is, again, showing the city residents, hey, yeah, we are taking a step, you know. I don't understand. If he's going to do it.
That's, it's your, your personal decision. I don't feel that.
And, and by, by this, we're not, I'm not sitting here trying to tell him how to do his job. We asked, you know, it was something that was asked. You're going to take and use that information, but you're not willing to say, listen, I as the mayor, standing behind, supporting or asking commissioners to do this?
Well, let's not just point out one person.
Well, okay, the rest of council.
Okay. But in my personal feelings, okay, he runs the county government. Now, let me finish. If you're going to keep interrupting, we're just going to, I'll just forget it. I don't like that.
Well.
If you ask me a question, let me answer the damn question.
You don't have to swear me.
Well, I can do whatever I want.
No, you can't. Don't disrespect me that way.
So I'm not disrespecting you, but don't, don't start an argument when there's already a vote taken.
I'm asking questions.
You had two other, you had three other people that voted no to it. I'm just telling you personally, okay, I don't feel that I need to tell another governmental body how to do their job. We requested it. I would have the same respect if they came to me and asked us to do a survey. I would prefer them to come and say, hey, would you mind doing the survey and sharing it with us? Absolutely, why would we not? But putting it to resolution, I, there's no, to me, there's no body to that. That's my personal. Anybody else want to add? Am I have to go myself? That's okay, I've been there before.
I don't want to call other parts of the government what to do. They have their own responsibility.
And I don't understand where, we, you asked, he, we asked him, he said he's willing. We're not telling, we're not saying, do, you know, we asked, would they be willing to do?
We can drive this all night long, unless you get another vote to change.
No, I'm, I'm not, you, what I'm, what I'm, is what the wording that you're using, we're not telling another, you're not telling another, that's not what we did. No, 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 you don't interrupt me like you just said, okay? You said you're not willing to tell another government agency what to do. We didn't do that. Even at the meeting, it was asked.
And they said they were going to do it.
Exactly. So what is?
So why isn't their word good enough?
So why isn't getting a resolution to support him saying what he's going to do good enough?
Because I put faith in our government to do a work with our local.
Good words.
So I appreciate this lively democratic session. It is 7:45. Lots of people, including staff, are here. It is late. I wonder if we can keep moving?
Depends. Are we done with it? Yeah. All right. So, under your old business authority boards and commissions, we have anything to report?
I will just report, your honor, that we did advertise again for the two vacancies for zoning hearing board alternate. Those application, or that application period is open until 4:30 on Monday, April 12th. Applications are available for download on the city's website, or they can be gotten at the office of the city clerk at the city building. There are two vacancies, they are three-year terms. So anybody who's interested in applying, that period is open currently.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance, a third and final reading establishing a blighted property review committee. Gary?
Okay, do you want to read that then?
An ordinance for the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, establishing a blighted property review committee in accordance with the requirements of Section 1712.1 of the Urban Redevelopment Law of 1945 as amended.
So this is just the third and final reading. It would call the blighted property review committee would be the body that would essentially take a look at certain properties that may, we may not be able to deal with from a code enforcement perspective or through potentially a purchase perspective. This body then would be authorized to take a look at the property, review it, certify it as blighted, and then move on to acquisition of that property if necessary. So this is the third and final reading of that. We will follow this up immediately, and you might want to talk about it now. You'll need to pick someone from council to serve on that board. Under the statute, there's to be two members from the redevelopment authority, one member from the city planning commission, one member of city staff. So, so far, the people that have been selected by those respective bodies are Jan Van Tyle and Jeff Youngs from the, from the redevelopment authority, Jason Ramsey from the planning commission, and Mary Ann Manano, the community development director here for the city, would be the staff representative. So council will have to pick from among themselves who would like to serve on that, on that blighted to serve on that, on that blighted property review committee with those other members to move that forward. So that would be in the form of a motion immediately following third and final of the ordinance, so I guess I kind of leave it open to council and the mayor, how you want to handle, who might want to serve on that.
Any member of council have an interest?
I have some interest.
Okay.
I do as well.
I might owe one of those playing in top.
Okay, so if you two don't mind serving on it then?
There's only, there's actually only one.
Jim hasn't worked.
There's only one member of council that's there, yeah, I'm sorry.
But if Jim's not available, I would still like to be updated and kept informed as to what's going on.
Is that Jim?
Okay.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you.
So you'll need to then, you'll need to vote on the ordinance then, and I'm not sure if it's a council, if it's a council motion that would name all five of those, I don't think the mayor would appoint that, I think we can, so adopt the, go ahead and make the third and final, and then maybe make a motion to appoint those five members as a slate, and then vote on that after the ordinance.
Actually, it's the other organizations that appoint their members to that.
They appointed their own?
Yes.
Okay.
So we only have to appoint one?
Is that a mayor appointment or a motion?
I'd rather do it by motion.
Good. First, let's vote third and final on where?
So we'll call on first.
I still need a first and second if I could.
Oh, I thought, oh, sorry.
Oh, we dumped that.
Motion yet on the floor?
Someone make a motion?
Also move.
All right, roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Would somebody like to make a motion to appoint Jim Rhodes?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Further discussion, roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Can I get the vote?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Conservation. You have a resolution, Katie?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program. Resolve by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas the city of Meadville desires to undertake the rehabilitation and further development of Bicentennial Park, including additional parking, natural play area with inclusive equipment and activities, paved walkways and improvements to roadway access, and whereas the city desires to receive from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources a grant for the purpose of carrying out this project, and whereas the application package includes a document entitled Terms and Conditions of Grant, and whereas the city understands that the contents of the document entitled Terms and Conditions of Grant, including appendices referred to therein, will become the terms and conditions of a grant agreement between the applicant and the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources if the applicant is awarded the grant. Now therefore be it resolved that the grant application may be electronically signed on behalf of the applicant by H. Lee Roy Sterns, who at the time of signing has the title of mayor. If this official signed the grant application electronic authorization prior to the passage of this resolution, this grant of authority applies retroactively to the date of signing. If the applicant is awarded a grant, the grant application electronic authorization signed by the above official will become the applicant grantee's executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the applicant grantee will be bound by the grant agreement. Any amendment of the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by the official who at the time of signing of the amendment has the title specified in paragraph one, and the grantee will be bound by that amendment. Be it further resolved that the appropriate city staff are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program in the amount of $105,500 with a local city match requirement of $105,500 and directed to take all action and to execute any and all appropriate documents associated with the grant application.
Motion first, authorization.
I'm going to.
Second?
Second.
Discussion through.
Yes, sir, thank you, your honor. So on the screen behind me, I have, it's kind of tough to see and I apologize for that, but this is Bicentennial Park, you'll see French Street right along in here, north is to the left, if you will, the existing restrooms are here, the existing pavilion is here, so the new work essentially would be a walkway that would connect from the existing pavilion to a new play area, the existing swings are kind of in this square right here, so it would be a new play area here, some new swings here, a few benches, and then an additional, essentially, essentially on-street parking, parallel parking, that would provide additional parking that is actually already sorely needed even without improvements to the playground area. The boat launch was recently rebuilt last year, you recall, the log cabin has been restored, a new kiosk was built for kayaks and canoes, this is an ongoing improvement of Bicentennial Park that it came out of the 2016 Comprehensive Record Park Plan. So, the funding for it, let me see if I can go back, oh, there we go. So the total project cost is about $211,000, we're requesting in the resolution tonight $105,500 from D.C. and our Department of Community Conservation and Natural Resources and state agency that funds these types of requests. You'll see below, it requires a 50-50 match, so last, last meeting, we requested approval for seeking $20,000 from the county act 13 funds, which is approved by council and that was actually applied for last week. The remainder of the match would come from $59,500 in paving and store market capital, this is related to what Nathan referenced earlier, we were waiting to pave French Street until next year to try to use that as some of the match, that new parking area would be included in the new paving. In addition, $15,050 in in-kind services, which is essentially public works department labor in actually laying the concrete, pouring the concrete walks, and then $10,950 in unallocated capital, this is essentially cash, cash contribution from the city to make up the remainder of the match. So what's before you today is a resolution seeking approval to apply for the $105,500 D.C. and our grant in order to try to move the project forward, we're, if successful with all grant applications, potentially have construction for next year, next construction season. So with that, I'll turn that back to you, mayor.
So the 105 that we're asking for, is that replacing what we had up, had for Bicentennial, that we put it to HP?
Right, yes, we had previously sought funding for, actually it was a different, different part of the, of the plan, there's also as part of this plan, the overall site plan for Bicentennial includes a trail that would connect the Urns Trail to Bicentennial and then to downtown, and the trail would essentially come down, go along French Creek, and then it's off this map, but it could connect with Mead Avenue. We'd received funding for that, to do some of that work as well a few years ago, at that same time, HP Way, which was under construction, had run into significant issues with design, some other issues, just things came in above budget, we moved that money at the state's suggestion, we moved the money from Bicentennial to HP Way to make sure that got finished. So this, it wouldn't necessarily replace that money, but this is essentially new money to have down here at Bicentennial to make some things happen.
Here I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Couple months or so ago, there was a discussion of a time capsule.
Yes.
And there was one suggestion of it being put at Bicentennial Park, and it was said no because of flooding, concerned, so why is all this money going in there, but there's, you know, if there's concern of flooding, when it came to putting the time capsule there, I mean, isn't there still concern of flooding?
It's in a floodway, I can't speak necessarily to the time capsule, I wasn't involved in that discussion, it is a floodway, I can say that. The improvements that we're making there with what's here, what we're proposing would not necessarily be negatively impacted dramatically by flooding, I mean, it's all flat work essentially, the playground area is of course made to be wet, and will be anchored adequately, so what we're proposing wouldn't necessarily be impacted by flooding, it is, it is indeed in a floodway, so I'm not sure if that has...
I was just trying to understand the logic behind not wanting to put a time capsule because of flooding, and again, that, excuse me, that wasn't you, that was, you know, prior, I'm just trying to understand that logic.
I think the reason, if I could, the reason that they talked about the time capsule is because it's a four-by-four piece of concrete, so by digging it up and putting it in the ground, and especially with the high waters that come up there, they were concerned that that was gonna pop it up and it could go floating away or taken away by high floodwaters in there, so that's why it was requested to move up to the diamond where the other time capsule was, that was the thinking behind it. But the grant money is also being done because of the trail that we were looking at that you mentioned going through the city, not only that, but we've done some ordinance changes down there so we could start using French Creek as a, I don't want to say resort, but...
Might improve the, improve recreational opportunities along the creek, yes.
Right. And I do want to point out one thing, council probably is not aware of this, but the kayak raft was donated by a private individual, we really appreciate that person doing that.
Jerry, are there like mockups or design plans street level for the...
The playground equipment?
Yeah.
I can share that with you, there were renderings by the company that did HP Way that shows kind of what the equipment will look like, I don't have that with me unfortunately, but I can definitely maybe share that at the next meeting and say this is roughly what we're looking at. Because it's so far off, we can't guarantee it's gonna be the exact same model, but that kind of idea of what we're looking to do, you'll have a playset for kids two to five, another one for five to 12, and then the swings, so it's actually three components to that, but I can definitely bring that, show that.
Saying that for the public?
Yeah.
Yeah, from the listening.
It'd be similar in scope to what we have at HP Way, I'll say that much.
Let's see, we went through, we did HP, we invited the neighborhoods, I don't know if you guys remember that, but we opened that up to the neighborhoods and at that time, Pat Bywater was involved.
He's got it, it's really instrumental in what was chosen.
So we brought all the kids down when we did the HP to see what kind of playground equipment they wanted, so I'm assuming we'd have that same kind of, we need to, when we get to that point.
We could, yep, sure.
But it says that it possibly built by 2022?
We're hoping next year, we're hoping next year.
It says you have a three-year windmill?
Yes.
Any other questions? Roll call, Katie?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Katie, we have an ordinance, first and second reading, property maintenance code amended.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending Part 17, Property Maintenance Code of the Meadville Municipal Code for Enforcement.
Motion first?
Does it move?
Second?
Second.
Discussion, here.
Yes, your honor, these are the same changes that we've talked about over the last several months, several meetings I should say, there's nine changes we're proposing to the property maintenance code, I'll go through them very quickly for the, to the benefit of those who were not at the previous meetings. The first one is to amend the method of service, which is the way we send notices and let owners know that there's a violation, the change would allow the notice to be sent by first-class mail instead of requiring it to be posted, delivered personally, or sent by certified mail. The second one would increase the minimum penalty from 50 to $100 for the, for a guilty finding. The third one would change a requirement, we currently have a requirement that boardings of doors or windows on a vacant structure shall be removed within 180 days of notice, that is currently only for vacant structures, we propose to change that to, to apply to any structure, whether it's occupied or not, that would be that, that change. The next change would actually be to the definition of junk, and it would add, and I'm just going to read it, add the section that says junk shall also mean materials or articles including, but not limited to grills, building materials, toys, household goods, lawn mowers and similar equipment, machinery, appliances, house furnishing, structures, vehicle parts, and any other article or material which has not been stored in compliance with the following standards and remained unused for a period of more than 180 days, whether or not it is still generally usable for the purpose for which it is manufactured. Those additional standards essentially mean they can be seen from a neighboring property or the street, so if it can't be seen from a neighboring property or a street and it's not junk, it can remain there indefinitely. And the goal with that, and I'll just speak very quickly, the goal with that is we often run into issues where we have certain materials that, while they may not be damaged by rain or being outside such as, you know, toys, or again, equipment, grills, things like that, they've remained in the same spot, building materials is another one, they've remained in the same spot, maybe they're still usable for the purpose for which they're intended, but it's clear that they're just kind of sitting there and kind of slowly sinking into the ground, and we can't currently define that as junk because they're still usable. So this would say if it's there for more than six months in the same spot, you haven't done anything with it, it becomes junk, so that's changed to the definition that would allow enforcement in that, in that situation. The next change would be to, for vehicle, motor vehicles that are in a state of major disassembly, disrepair, or damage requiring substantial repairs or bodywork, shall not be stored outside of a building essentially in the public for more than 60 days, currently there is no specific timeframe on that for, for those types of vehicles to be remedied, okay? Right now, there's nothing on it, so it would default to our, our general 25-day, that's often not enough time to get it taken care of, so it's bumping it to 60 days, which is in compliance with their other junk vehicle standards. The next change would be to animal waste, and currently the animal waste, the section of the code that deals with that basically is very restrictive, it talks about animal waste that is current, that is in buildings, yards, or enclosures, and we basically said animal waste that's kept and maintained on a property shall not be, and shall not create a public nuisance, and just in general, and that would, that could be smell, that could be nuisance, it could be that you see it, you know, all kinds of reasons that it could become a public nuisance. There's also in that section that we would remove, it says all waste shall be removed on a weekly basis, and there are other responsible ways to deal with animal waste, other than removing it from this, from the property on a weekly basis, and we proposed to essentially say it just can't create a public nuisance, and so you can compost it, you can do other things with the waste, so that it doesn't become a nuisance, and that would allow that to happen. The next change has to do with, it's called unapproved materials, and it's essentially meant to target tarps on roofs, building wrap left for years on the sides of buildings where it's supposed to be sited over, and the use of plastic or other materials to essentially enclose porches, that's really kind of what we were talking about, you'll recall in this last few meetings, we talked about that. We did incorporate a provision that allows clear plastic to be used to enclose front porches, a request of council, or porches, or any other area, exterior area, from October 1st to April 1st, as long as it's maintained properly. Okay, so that is incorporated in there, so permit clear plastic sheeting to be used to enclose a porch, for, essentially for weatherization purposes. The last three changes all have to do with timing, and it changes the deadline for compliance from three days to seven days, and that has to do with high grass, garbage, and refuse, and snow and ice removal notices, all change from three days to seven-day notice, and that's just essentially to make sure the property owners have enough time to get things taken care of once the, once they receive the notice. So that's a quick rundown of the changes that are in that ordinance, I welcome any questions, concerns, thoughts, we have talked about this multiple meetings, but I just want to make sure everyone's clear on what that will do, your honor.
I'm clear on it, I just, I do have a question though, it just came on my mind, for places like Gilville and Fairmont, where there's no real storage space for people that have grills and a lot of toys, how are we gonna deal with that? Because I know that's gonna be one of the arguments that you're gonna, you know, the office is gonna get.
I know that residents are allowed to have sheds, and I know there's community buildings, I don't know enough to say whether they're able to store things inside that.
Okay.
So I would, I guess what I'll say is if we do see that going on and it meets those definitions, we shall, we will notify the housing authority to get it taken care of, there may be other options the housing authority has, but I know there's multiple spots where people, longer-term residents essentially will have sheds and other storage places where they could put that, and I can't speak to specific services they might have.
Yeah, I was just thinking about, you know, like being forced, bringing down those type, you know, the...
Yep. Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Ordinance, first and second reading, amending the market authorities article of incorporation, Katie?
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 171, Authorities of the Meadville Municipal Code to extend the existence of the Meadville Market Authority for a period of 50 years.
Motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, here, your honor.
I'm fairly confident I'm gonna mess this up, so anyone that wants to correct me can. This essentially follows up a resolution of council that was taken, I believe, last month, that extends the life of the market authority for another 50 years, and at the suggestion of council, I'm not sure which councilman it was, or councilperson it was, but wanted to ordain that, put that into the code, so that it essentially is easier to find in the future, because we weren't quite sure exactly what was going on, I think the city was notified by state that this was happening.
Yes.
So this will essentially codify this, in the city's codified, it's more easily find, searchable, easier to find.
It's already been filed with the Department of State, the resolution that you passed in March, so it's already been done, but this is a good idea to bluestrap it and codify it in the city's ordinances, that's what you're doing tonight.
Easy to find.
Yeah, there's nothing new under this, it's just kind of backing up the resolution
It's already been filed with the Department of State, the resolution that he passed in March, so it's already been done, but this is a good idea to bluestrap it and codify it in the city's ordinances. That's what you're doing tonight.
Easy to find.
Yeah. There's nothing new under this, it's just kind of backing up the resolution that was done previously.
Any questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Uh, discussion, Euclid Avenue vacating, here.
Thank you, Your Honor. Council has in their packets, and up on the screen is an aerial image of the unopened Euclid Avenue. This is a paper street that runs between Porter Street and Ernst Place, just north of Chestnut Street. I don't know if you can see on the screen, the cursor here, this shows roughly where it is. We currently have a request, or we will soon have a request from Mr. Labruzo, Chris Labruzo, who owns essentially, essentially all of these properties along here. He has a request to vacate essentially from here to here-ish. So this section here, so that he's able to build a garage back in here more easily, because currently setbacks are from this line here. And if we vacated it, essentially, the half of it would go to his property on this side, moves his property line halfway across, gives him another 20 feet to build, essentially. What I'm asking council is, this goes all the way through, and if he's requesting to vacate a good third of it, should, should we not, out of, in the spirit of efficiency, have council manic action to just vacate the rest, the rest of this while we're at it, and just have it, it can be done, vacating a street can be done two ways. It can be done by applicant of the, application of the abutting property owners, or it can be done by council action itself. There's two slightly different processes, but I'm frankly, I'm fairly certain that a lot of these owners don't even know that this is back here, and they're using it as their own property anyway. And I'm wondering if we don't just vacate all of it anyway, and vacate any public interest in it for the whole, for the whole block, just for the sake of not having to do this again two or three times if we get further requests in the future.
So then, where the line is, would be the, the boundaries of each property owner would come up to that line, then?
Essentially, it would, you'd split that down the middle. Generally, that's what happens. That there may be underlying subdivision, private subdivision rules that may apply in certain cases, but from a city's public interest perspective, we would move that property line to the middle of the, of each vacated street, for the purpose of, someone wants to put a shed back there, oh, you gotta be three feet off the center of it, as opposed, of the center of the former street, as opposed to three feet off of the edge of the form, of the street.
Gary, I'm sorry, Gary, in this situation, I mean, I'm not sure how familiar you are with that.
I'm not familiar with that paper street, but.
Does that release us from any liability? I mean, once?
Yes, I think the question is, does the city have any need for that?
Well, that's my next question. Is there any right of way that we would need to get into that property?
No, we would, we would make sure that any utilities that may be under there, and I'm pretty sure there aren't. If there were any utilities in there, we'd notify them and say, you're going to need to get an easement to get into there if you need to get to your utilities. But I don't see why the city would have any interest at all in that.
There have been some issues in the past regarding these kind of streets, and some concerns, and some legal theories. One being that, in theory, everybody in this neighborhood, or in that subdivision, has the right to access this street. And by unilaterally vacating it, I don't know where that, I mean, we can vacate our interest in it, but I don't think we can vacate the street per se. And I'm looking, for example, down here, and I know that this property owner uses the street to access his or her garage. So if you vacated the entire street.
His driveway would become cut in half, right?
Exactly. And there have been fistfights over similar issues here in the city in the past.
And what about at the other end? I mean, it looks like there's usage at that end, too.
Chris owns it both.
I think Chris owns that. I think he's using that. I think that it might be wise just to ask all the members of this block, at the very least, what their pleasure would be. In vacating this, and if we do vacate as a city, that we specifically acknowledge that we are vacating only our interest in the property, not in any other interests that private property owners may have.
Right, here?
Yes, that's, the concern's legitimate, that neighbors do have issues occasionally over.
With this whole rivalry, it looks like it goes back to the garage. It's in the, in the street right away.
That someone's built in the street right away.
Yeah.
I mean, is it, is it possible to move forward the process, whatever it would be for the city to vacate the street and notify the surrounding property owners that, right, this action is on the table at a council meeting, and here's how you would, right, for, here's how you submit public comment.
Well, that, that's part of the process, yeah. So I guess the question, then, just moving forward.
Do we want to do the whole street, or just part of it? Paper street?
Right, I mean, right, so should I, it sounds like, should I contact every property along there and say, you may not be aware, but there's a paper street behind you, council is interested in vacating and public interest in it. You may have private rights to utilize that, you know, separate from council's action. Or should I just process Mr. Labruzo's request as it comes in? I mean, we can still do just that.
But Labruzo's request would do the same thing, wouldn't it, when they, all portions?
Just, just this, essentially, he owns this and this, and he would have to get approval, he has approval from this one. He would still need to get approval from this one, and he would draw the line kind of at an angle from here to here, and vacate this. So this half of this would go to this property owner, essentially. And this half would go to this property owner, and then the rest of this would essentially go to Mr. Labruzo. From a city's standpoint, again, there are private subdivision rights, as Councilman Roa indicates, that may or may not be present, that the city does not enforce. The city has nothing to do with. So those are always the underlying concerns, and I always let people know when they, when they seek this time, type of action. You're going to want to have your attorney check into that, and make sure that you actually, you actually would have the right, or others would not have the right to use it. But I just wanted to, you know, just out of, out of efficiency, should we just vacate the entire? So I'm not sure that I'm necessarily hearing that.
Well, can I, can I ask you to say more about the efficiency piece? Is it easier for staff, right? Like, does it just kind of remove this from the table if, should something come up again? Like, what is the motivation?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an interesting, I don't know that it's something that's ever going to be developed. I don't see why we would have, we have a lot of these, frankly. And so with Chris, with Mr. Labruzo requesting, you know, vaciation of a third, I just thought it might be more efficient to just seek, let's just do the whole thing while we're at it. We don't have to, no, for sure, we don't have to do that, but I just thought out of sake of efficiency that we may, maybe look at that. I could poll the residents and see if there's interest, or I could just go with what, you know, he requests as well. Either way, it's fine. I just wanted to bring it to council to get your feel before we processed Mr. Labruzo's request.
So based on some of the concerns that council raised in this discussion, what Kerry Johnson is suggesting potentially is just take a limited action, right? So just act on Mr. Labruzo's backyard, basically, right? Then there are only a couple of budding landowners that will be here, either saying they agree or not, right? Rather than polling the whole street, who might be wondering what, what government action, why are you taking this action, right? Especially if people have built there, right? Because now they're going to be having a discussion with themselves. I wasn't aware of that. I, I agree, we could be broader in our action, but it might not be necessary, so if you have concerns, you could just take a limited government action and act on the request that comes before you either sign.
Those added layers make it less efficient, which kind of negates why doing them.
Sure. Well, we don't, I don't know that we need anything right now, but I do need a consensus of council, which way I'd like to go.
I agree with the limited option at this point.
Just Labruzo?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
That'll come back for action by the ones who have an application.
Yep, we'll have an act. Yes. Thank you.
Welcome. We got a discussion on the Property Maintenance Code Enforcement Agreement, City of Meadville, Hayfield. You're going to take each one of these separately?
I think we can take them together, because it's just discussion. We don't have it, this is the first time you're actually seeing them. We had talked about it previously, but we had not, you haven't seen this. So essentially, we wrote up this, Elizabeth Spatafor and I wrote this up, reached out to some other communities that we know are having issues finding code enforcement officials essentially to enforce their local codes. There's two communities that have responded, Linesville Borough and Hayfield Township, that are interested, and they actually have already signed it, have already approved and signed it. It would essentially, we would have our property maintenance staff enforce their ordinances, and have all the same powers they would have in the city, and they would have them over there. Each community at the, at the rate of $30 per hour, door to door. So from the time they leave the city building until they're back, that, that's rate, that rate is ongoing. Plus expenses, plus mailing, plus, well, really just mailing and mileage, frankly, would be reimbursed. We're not, we don't know exactly how much to, to expect. We don't expect too much in either one, but you never know. You know, you never really know exactly how much. We would only be requested to do it by the municipality, we would not take complaints from individuals. It would have to come from the office of the township, and the office of the borough, say, go please check this out. We would then go follow up with notices, citations as necessary. Again, these are, these are identical, other than the out clause, so there, there's an out clause that either, any, any, either party can opt out with, with notice. With the Hayfield one, it's 60 days. With Linesville, they wanted to go with 30 days. We have no problem with that. Elizabeth had no problem with that. I'm not sure if Gary has any issues with that, with it being a little different. That's the only difference, everything else is the same. Again, this is just, just discussion, so with that, I would leave it to council for questions at this point.
We can handle, you don't think there are going to be that many calls, is that what you're thinking?
We don't think so. We know there's nothing guaranteed, but, yeah.
And we'll be able to handle the roll call.
Yes.
This will be done by a resolution? Or just by a consensus?
There would have to be a resolution to enter.
There's a resolution to approve those agreements and that such thing.
Right, and just wanted to know if it was okay, then we could set it for a resolution at one of the next, the following meeting, yes.
Yeah, as long as we can handle our own calls, handle their calls, it's an income. I'm okay with it. You have a consensus?
I think so. Thank you very much.
Okay, discussion, resolution, emergency assistance service agreement, Katie? There, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to read the resolution, or do you want to discuss it first?
We can discuss it first. This is, you haven't, you have not seen this, you've heard of this, but you have not seen it yet, and Commissioner Henry's still here, so that's helpful. It's your signature on the bottom, I believe. So, you're in, man. Okay. So this is essentially, it's an agreement between the city and Meadville Area Ambulance Service. And I, I don't want to get too much into Commissioner Henry's business, but essentially, they're having a lot of issues with fielding enough staff, essentially, to, to make sure that there's enough ambulances.
Not so much our, I saw, I guess, now you're English.
Sure, please. Yeah, go ahead, you can help.
So what's happening now, there's one 24-hour ambulance in the Clint Lake Borough, and there used to be two. And there used to be also three volunteer services, one in Cambridge, one in Crawford. So when the volunteer ambulance, or the paid ambulance in Clint Lake goes on a call, the Meadville ambulance covers the Ohio Line. So when we, when our ambulance service is out, she subsequently would cover from the Ohio Line to the Townville Borough. That's kind of how the, the problem has started. There's EMS staffing problem in general. But because there used to be two there, and two volunteers in North and South, we're now taking all those calls. We, we're at 39 municipalities, two townships in Mercer County, and we cover about 67,000 people in the whole group of it. What happens is, in the case of you guys in the fire department, if, if we have a person doing an ALS assist, which is just a paramedic going out somewhere, we have one staff member left, rather than wait for ambulance to come all the way to Clint Lake to come in, or a town goat, we're all out. That, your, your fireman hops on with my employee, and we pay you to drive us to the hospital. $50, I think is what it says, is what's happening up with. I thought it was a good, actually, Councilwoman Vogel sent me an email about this in regards to EMS and the funding and what you guys talked about before. I thought it was a good way to use both, both personnel, without having to wait, delay the ambulance for care from a long way away, but yeah, get the, get the resident, the city person to the hospital fairly quick. And then your squad follows us, and then they get back on their squad, and then they go home. So, in any essence, yeah.
Right, so, and it, and it, it, basically, it would have paid the city 50, paid the city $50 every time one of our staff members would have to drive the ambulance to the hospital in order to make a transport. That's essentially what it would be.
And they've always been willing to do that for us, of course. We just happened to decide we should probably, you know, help your, offset the cost load, it would be good.
Right, so it's, it's some income. It, this, this formalized, would formalize that type of agreement moving forward. So every time it happened, we would be paid a little bit, but making sure, you know, it also helps with the, you know, getting people to the hospital quicker as well, of course, which is always a good thing. Again, Elizabeth had reviewed this, and I think helped write it with Chief Wiley. Commissioner Henry has signed it. But this is, again, this is just, this can be for a resolution as well, or it can be just discussion. We can put it on the next meeting agenda for actual action, or you can do that tonight if you're comfortable with it. I know council doesn't like to act on things the first time they see things, so it's up to council.
I did review this ordinance, and I was involved in drafting indemnification sections, so there's mutual indemnification there. This is actually just formalizing, in action, what we're already doing, and now this will get paid for it. But the agreement was fine, probably was.
And if you want to think about it more, Gary, we would be willing to retroactively pay from the time I signed it, too, so it gets better for you as well. That's up to you.
How many years will you go back?
Uh, you know, three days.
We have a resolution prepared.
We do.
You guys want to do the resolution now?
Let's do a resolution.
Yes.
So I, I do want to ask you, Gary, can you speak maybe to, and this is what Eric was bringing up, but, right, the recommendation from the Pennsylvania Academy League about revenue sharing with Mass, can you, can you speak to how this relates to that particular recommendation?
Oh, well, it's, it's definitely a foot in the door, I will say that much. I mean, same thing, similar to the Hayfield and Linesville agreements, you know, it's, it's an effort to work with other communities where there's a need, or in other agencies when there's a need, while also helping, maybe helping the city a little bit as well, you know. So we're helping them, the communities and the agencies with providing the service that they need, while also helping to kind of help our bottom line a little bit as well. So it does speak to the stamp report in that way as well, so that's a good point.
And I would also add, Gary, and I appreciate that going back several years, but in return, I would go back to the number of fire standbys we covered for nothing, so. We, it's kind of an agreement, uh, we try to, we do the fire standbys, we stand by, help your fire guys out, we don't charge for that. Honestly, this email you sent me, and we talked about it, and, and our supervisors, and said that this helps us, and it helps the city. I think it's a great, great commitment for both of us, and Chief Wiley, you know, obviously, in the ambulance mode, himself, had worked there, so he understood it, and I think it's just good timing, so. It's a, it's a good thing for everyone.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on an emergency assistance service, assistance services agreement between the City of Meadville and Meadville Area Ambulance Service. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially, and the form attached here, too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing signatures for lease agreement for use and maintenance green space.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a license agreement for the use and maintenance of green space between the City of Meadville and Hydroblocks Incorporated. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here, too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
And a motion for signature, motion, second?
Second.
Discussion, here.
Yes, Your Honor. In your packets and on the screen behind me is Exhibit A, which shows the contemplated area of the, of the license, it's essentially the grass area and a row or two of parking to the south. This, of course, just to reorient you, have Mill Run to the north, French Creek to the west, Mercer Street to the south, and the bypass to the, to the east. Now, this has for decades been used by the public for recreational purposes, most notably soccer, soccer games, soccer fields. City has maintained mow for years. This would essentially formalize that agreement with mutual indemnification. The city still mows, city provides the garbage. Hydroblocks make sure the parking lot's in good condition, has out clauses of. Hydroblocks make sure the parking lot's in good condition, has out clauses, of course, but it's essentially just a license agreement to allow the city to use that, and the public to use it, frankly, for recreational purposes. And this is something we've discussed in the past as well.
Does this include the trail? Or is this just the use of the property?
Just the use of the property.
Normally, we're giving these licenses, and now we're receiving them.
It was once used as Pomona Park.
There, yeah, there might have been a part of it that was Pomona, yeah.
Lower?
Up closer toward what would have been David Lee.
Yeah.
Five to ten year park.
Any other discussions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing signatures agreement with ARC Green Space, Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a cooperation agreement for ARC Green Space Project between the City of Meadville, ARC of Crawford County, and Amara Gethin. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as in for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
No move. Second?
Second.
Gary?
Yes, Your Honor. You'll recall, Andy, you talked about this at the last couple of meetings, this is for redevelopment of the space that formerly housed the Meadville Club. The ARC of Crawford County owns the property, but in order to obtain DCNR funding for that, the city had to be the applicant, so we had an agreement that essentially gave the city license for the property. This will essentially, what it does is put the onus back on Amara Gethin as agent for the ARC and the ARC itself to put the, basically, the management of the project back on to them. It's just a symptom of how grant, state grants are handled, and so this agreement would essentially put it back on them, name Amara as project coordinator as required by the grant, and provide some kind of, some specific contact with city staff to help manage the grant as well, but mainly puts the onus back on Amara and the ARC to actually manage the grant, so that it doesn't put too much of a stress on city staff.
So this was a formality that we had to jump through for the grant funding. It, the agreement is fine, I was involved quite a bit, and there was a lot of back and forth, to make sure all the parties were protected while we're still trying, making sure we comply with all the grant requirements, so that those funds come in and get used for the project, which everyone wants to have.
Any questions, Thompson? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing signatures for Family Medical Leave Act, Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a Family and Medical Leave Act administration agreement between the City of Meadville, FMLA Source Incorporated, and Proflex Administrators. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as in for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Gary?
Yes, Your Honor. Andy had previously mentioned this item as well. Family Medical Leave Act administration is very complex, and COVID has only made it more so. This agreement would essentially outsource most of that management to an outside firm instead of having it handled by city staff at a fairly reasonable price. I believe it's about $2,100 a year, $2,000 a year or so. It's based essentially on the number of employees we have at $1.75 each per month. So it's fairly reasonable cost, and it just, it changes all the time, and it's very difficult to administer. At this point, I'll kind of kick it to Deb, she has a little more expertise with that.
Sure. So because there's two kinds of FMLA, there's intermittent, and then there's the standard FMLA, and with these changes, there's always resurification, there's always, you know, you have to keep track of all, you know, when someone's on intermittent, so it is very time consuming, and it could be a serious lawsuit if terms aren't followed. So this particular agreement does take the liability off the city. It all falls to this group because they're managing it. Basically, they also provide training for our, they'll provide training for our department heads to maybe learn what a key word would be to trigger FMLA, because there's so much that's involved with it, to try to use it in a, and basically, we'll have little cards, and we'll hand it to the employees, and then from that way, this company takes over the whole process to it. It's very reasonable. Right now, we have 78 full-time employees, so if we stayed at the current staff, it'd be about $16, a little over $1,600 a year to have this outsourced to this particular firm. And this was recommended to us by our broker, a DJB, this firm. It's a two-year agreement, but I think, I think it's in the best interest to keep us all above board.
You answered my question. We don't need to notify our carrier, we're using this contract, because carriers rep the body.
Yes, actually, Mark uses this company frequently for his other clients, and they, like I said, when you're on intermittent, you need doctors, they follow up on everything. So it takes the responsibility off of us and the liability if something's not followed through the law.
Many of our clients are doing what Debbie is doing, in recommending using an outsourced service like this to try to, to make sure they comply with the FMLA requirements.
I have a question. Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Resolution to the Pennsylvania Academy League Strategy Program.
Libra?
Yes.
Before she reads the resolution?
Sure.
I would like to make a suggestion for your consideration. Clause four, whereas the Council of City of Meadville desires to accept those recommendations and so on and so forth, I would suggest that we remove the word "accept" and insert the clause "acknowledge receipt of those recommendations." There are a couple of reasons for doing that. If you accept the recommendation, let's use our tonight presentation, if we're accepting the recommendation to eliminate 911 dispatch, and you accept that recommendation in here, and then you decide not to do it, what have you, what have you accomplished? Whereas if you simply acknowledge, "We have received the recommendations," which enables us to go on to phase two of the Strategic Management Planning Program, you know, whatever the future holds is whatever the future may hold.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I think that's a good word.
All right. Katie, do you need me to, where it says, the Council of the City?
Yeah, no, I, does it need to be, does he need to formalize it in the motion?
Well, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't shown the resolution yet.
But if he does, that, he can just amend?
As noted, I am just.
Okay.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
My second.
Further discussion?
Just for clarification, you're motioning as amended.
As amended, it's my second. Is that your motion?
Is there discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. This is just the final report, this is the, there's nothing new in here that you haven't seen before, it's just assembled into one final document, has everything in there that we had talked about before, with the addendums of the benchmarks for similarly sized cities. So everything is right here. Without any questions, concerns, I think we've talked about it quite a bit. Any other thoughts? Just need to acknowledge receipt thereof, and we can move on to applying for some funding to help implement some of the recommendations in here.
Any questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Can we, can that be on the website for public?
Yep, 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 yep. We were going to do that.
The only one change that Gary was, that the dispatch week budget was incorrect.
She fixed it.
Oh, okay.
She fixed it.
And that's what I was quickly trying to find.
Yep, she did.
We have a resolution recognizing Rick Williams upon his retirement, Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville recognizing Rick Williams upon his retirement. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas Rick Williams has served as a valued employee of the City of Meadville for a total of almost 41 years, having served in a variety of positions, including zoning administrator, building inspector, director of planning and development, and development manager. And whereas Mr. Williams opted to retire from his most recent position as the part-time shade tree program manager, a position he took only one week after retiring from full-time employment with the City of Meadville. And whereas Mr. Williams has performed the duties of his office with dedication, thoughtfulness, and accuracy. And whereas Mr. Williams has elected to fully retire from active employment with the City of Meadville and will be sorely missed by his coworkers. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville, that Rick Williams is hereby commended for his many years of loyal and dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville, that the best wishes of the city are extended to Mr. Williams for every success in the future.
Motion to accept the resolution.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. We just want to thank Rick for all the many positions that he's held over the years he was here.
He's done a wonderful job.
He has. He was always there and stepped up to the plate when we needed him to, so I just want to wish him the best in retirement. All right?
Thank him for his service.
John?
Thanks.
Okay. Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Councilmember statements. There, I'll start with you.
Well, summer's almost here, but still wear your mask, be safe. Kids are out playing a lot more in the streets, so just be safe and enjoy this weather. We don't have to worry about hopefully snow. And thank you guys for your work that you've done on getting all this together. Appreciate it. A lot of information.
Jim?
Just like to thank staff and council and the press and everybody else for taking the time to be here. It's been a long meeting. We've accomplished quite a bit, and it's a good example of the process at work.
Thanks, Jim. Owen?
Sure, I want to make the public aware of a public input session, that the task force that's being spearheaded by members of Planning Commission to create a climate action plan is holding. Information can be found on the city's Facebook page, potentially the website too, maybe, but that meeting for, to learn about the climate action plan and get input will be held over Zoom Tuesday, April 20th, from 6:30 to 8:00. And I guess I just want to, just want to add to, right, I mean, every, every meeting for the last year, right, we've seen the priorities that we all agreed on, and we've seen how hard it is to get us to agree on stuff, and so, you know, I think that like tonight, we had two pretty big opportunities to make some bold moves in the direction that we've all agreed we wanted to go, and I did not see, I did not see action taken boldly in the way that maybe I would have wanted to. I know that these are going to be difficult decisions to make, I know that dispatch is going to be hard. I was a casualty of city restructuring myself, like, I get how hard that is, but we also, we know from how hard it was to budget last year, and how hard we know it would be to continue to budget, we know we can't afford to keep doing things the way that we've done them, and so I thought that we were on track to prioritize those things that we look at every time we meet, and to take bold steps, and I hope we'll reconsider that. I don't know what next steps look like for us, but I hope we'll do diligence to the priorities that we set and we promised to our constituents.
Sean?
I had my first Pfizer vaccine yesterday. Finally, I became, it was my turn, and I, and it actually, I terrified needles, and it did not hurt at all, and it hurts now. So that's what it's going to do, and I'm already scheduled for my second one, but I had to do it for people that if you were, would, if you're on the edge and you're not sure to get it, go ahead and go get it, it's not, I don't think it's going to be, I think it's a great opportunity to open the world back up and have our lives get back to normal, and I've got my kids talked into it now, as soon as it gets to them, it's their turn too, and just hang in there a little longer, that's all.
Thank you. I just want to wish Rick a great retirement, and appreciate it again, all the stuff he's done. We had a lot tonight, I'm sure a lot, and one nice thing about being elected officials, we each have our own responsibilities and our own feelings, and we do what we feel is right, so, is that a call for insurance?
To executive session.
For?
Real estate litigation, pending litigation and personnel.
Okay. Motion, she would, Jerry, she, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Probably going there, so you can.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Sterns?
Aye.